Thank you.
Great, all right, so all of our virtual participants can can hear and be heard. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote or in person, and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. For tonight's meeting, we have committee members Jackie Wiseman and Kelly Percio attending remotely, along with our student representative Marvel, who will join later. And in person, all other attendees are in person in the Simmons Lecture Hall. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments at the designated public comment time in the agenda will be invited to do so and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments. All righty, so with that, she's going to be right back. Okay, we can get to the first item on the agenda, which is a vote to approve the meeting minutes. So our first set of meeting minutes to approve is from the regular meeting of March 21st, 2024. Do any committee members have comments, questions, or suggested edits?
No.
None? Okay. Can I get a motion then to approve the minutes from March 21st?
So move DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
Great, thank you. Next up are the meeting minutes from our workshop from February 15th, 2024. Do any committee members have questions, comments, or edits?
Nope, Mike, edit was changed.
Okay.
Corrected.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion then to approve the workshop minutes from February 15th, 2024?
So move DeLuca.
Second. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
Okay, great. All righty, the next item on the agenda is a vote to approve a foreign travel trip. So this is for...
Thank you so much. A wonderful teacher and world language teacher extraordinaire Becky Michael is here to share with us this evening a proposed trip to the annual Quebec trip. So I'm going to be here and turn it over to Becky for anything. I know that you have a video that you would like to share with the committee. I do.
Did you want us to move that to the audience?
I don't know where it's going to... Am I... Is this good? Can y'all hear me? All right. Yeah, so I have the proposal for the new trip, but we did want to say thank you very much for the trip that we just took. It was our first February trip to Quebec. So video is behind you. And I brought with me one of our wonderful student travelers, Sadie Keith, and one of our very brave parent chaperones, Rachel Lockhart, so we could just tell y'all a little bit about how this trip went, and then I'll propose the next one once we show you how wonderful this one was and what a great time we had.
Okay, well, let's let's get ourselves out of the way then. We definitely want to be able to view it and to let the audience here see it as well. So just take a second and pop out of the way.
So these are just highlight clips from it. So, I mean, I have lots of wonderful things to say about the trip. It was the first time we went in February. I was a little bit nervous about going in the winter months, didn't know what the weather would hold. I would say it was anywhere from, what, 11 to 16 degrees out all day, every day. So definitely on the colder side, but in spite of the cold, it was really worth it. We got to do some really cool and interesting and different activities on the trip. So before I say too much, I'll turn it over to Sadie. You want to tell us a little bit about your experience on the trip?
Hello, so I obviously went on, I just went on the Quebec trip, and it was amazing, such an amazing opportunity to go. And it was so cool, all the activities we did. It was so well thought out and planned very thoroughly, and I thought it was just so fun. And it was also very educational, being able to speak to native French speakers, because in class, we don't really know what we're doing all the time. So getting to speak to people that actually know what they're saying is, like, it was a really good experience, and getting to know the history of Quebec was super interesting, too, and our tour guide was amazing, and just I loved everything about the trip. So, yeah.
What was your favorite activity?
My favorite activity, ooh, that's really hard. I really liked dog sledding. That was a super fun one.
Dog sledding?
Mm-hmm.
That's a big one. All right, Rachel?
And curling, you were great at curling.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. I agree with Sadie completely. It was a fantastic trip. We had a great time. I looked at the itinerary and I thought, oh, my God, there's not even a second of rest, but it never, ever felt like too much. Everything we did was so much fun. Everybody participated. We had a great time. And one of the things as a parent that I love to see was that all of the kids were getting along together. There were no cliques, there was no breaking off. It was a group of, what was it, 29 or 30 kids?
Thirty-something.
Yeah. And it was so inclusive, and all the chaperones got along really well, and the kids were kind of, you know, going with different chaperone groups, and it was a fantastic experience. I think everybody had a blast with every single thing we did. You did such a great job planning it. Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I echo what the two of them said. It was phenomenal, and I do, I love, I feel like every year we have the experience of you watch the kids who you don't see interacting at school suddenly interacting and like showing up for each other and having a good time and new friends forming. I will say there was one trip where apparently a couple got together and they stayed together through all of high school, was what I heard from a mom at a parent teacher conference down the line. So, you know, sometimes friendships, sometimes, but, I mean, it's a really neat experience. And the tour company we work with is phenomenal. I really appreciate them. We got there the first day, and the first thing our tour manager said to me was, we're having to cancel dog sledding because the conditions are not safe, and we want your safety, safety is number one. And so she told me, and then I kept it a secret for most of the day. I guess I told all the adults, and then they were threatening to riot, and they were unhappy with it. So sad. And then we told the kids at the end of the day, and they were so tired, I don't even think they registered it. And then the first thing the next morning, she came up to me and she said, I found a place, they have snow, it's safe, we're going to make it happen. And so just throughout the trip, she worked really hard at that kind of thing, and I think it's also cool for the kids to have that experience, if you kind of have to roll with it and adjust and and see how things go. We had phenomenal parent chaperones. We had, I think, 11 parent chaperones on this trip, and it was just a blast. So it was a lovely trip. So we can take a look at our short little video with some highlights. That's us on the bus, the boys in the back. Yeah. So that's the St. Lawrence River. It was icy. There was ice, and they have ships that go through and like break up all the ice. So we did this ferry crossing, and you could see on the ferry all the ice going by as we arrived in Quebec City. Ketchup potato chips, must have. Because I was a little cold.
Do you have the Instagram page?
I did, yep.
Going this time, too?
We did, yep. We have, we have the Instagram, and then there's a Google photo album, there's curling. Yep. They had a great time. They got to play full, full games of it, and the instructors were phenomenal. That was snowshoeing. So we went snowshoeing because they were going to cancel dog sledding, and then when they redid dog sledding, we also got to go snowshoeing anyway. They're all good, they're all good. Yes. So that's us dog sledding. So they said to us the day, like, I think it was the day we went dog sledding. So just so you know, the adults are going to drive the sleds, and all the excitement that we had turned to fear as we went, we have to drive the dog sleds with the kids sitting in them. Totally easy. I think at the end, the biggest complaint was, they didn't go fast enough. Oh, yeah, it's no doing. That was fun. That was good. Interesting bowling skills. We went, we saw the Ice Hotel. That was pretty cool. Maple syrup taffy.
Oh, yum.
Yeah, a must, a must have every time. Picture. That was right before we got on the bus to drive back, too. It was timing. Really good bowling skills. We have a shared photo album with, I think, like 400 photos in it, so I went through and tried to pull like a good smattering of all the different things that we did. Yeah, Kathleen. So, yeah, so it was a wonderful trip. Great, great students, great chaperones, great tour guide, and we're really happy with it. So thank you all for approving our trip. Of course, we really appreciate the opportunity. It's such a cool thing for students to get to do, so really appreciate that.
Never forget it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good one.
Well, let's hop back up there, and then we can continue the discussion and then the plan for next year.
So while, while the school committee is coming back, I'll just, I'll just note a couple of things that that looked phenomenal, and it looked fun, and it looked easy. It might have been the first two, but it's not easy. As someone who has taken students on trips, there's a lot of organization and a tremendous amount of responsibility. We have to remember that, did our staff have fun? I hope so, but they also forfeited their vacation with their families, with their friends, time to do nothing, or what they choose to do on their own time and schedule. We all know how much we value our vacation time, and we just, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge and remember that this isn't just pleasure for all of them. They're extending their job into their vacation to the nth degree. We love all of our kids, but having 30-something of them in a foreign country without perhaps their parents present, some of them for the first time leaving, it can be a challenge. And as I said, it's a tremendous responsibility. So we can't run these programs without staff who are literally volunteering their time to do this. So very much appreciate that, Ms. Michael, as well as the parent volunteers. Ms. Michael can't do it alone, obviously. In terms of the educational piece, I love that you shared that. Those of us that have studied a foreign language know that immersion is really the best way to bring it all together, and a language isn't just about grammar. It's about understanding the culture and the perspectives and the viewpoint, and it's very difficult to get that from a book or even from a dynamic, wonderful teacher. Being able to be in that culture, being able to be the person who's different than everyone else. It's a, it's a priceless experience. And so while I appreciate the extension of appreciation to administration and the school committee, I just want to make sure that the public, who may not have done something like this before, understands just what an undertaking it is, and thank you for making it look easy, but some of us aren't fooled, because we've been there. So thank you very much for all of that on behalf of our kids.
Do, before we move on to the proposal for next year, do any committee members have any comments or feedback on what looked like a really amazing trip? And thank you for, and I know it takes effort to even put a video together. I've done that occasionally, and that's, you crammed a lot in there, so to comb through and upload all of that and organize it so that we can see and get that little smattering of the trip in two minutes is really amazing. So thank you for, whoever put that together, if it was you or if you had help, okay.
Right on the way back.
Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you for giving us a glimpse of the trip. Okay, all right. So, all right, so I guess we can move on then to the proposal for next year.
So next year, so next year's proposal, very similar to this year, where I'm looking to go February again, first four days of February vacation, which is what we did this time. So we leave bright and early Saturday morning, we get back Tuesday evening. The itinerary is almost the exact same with a couple of exciting changes, in my opinion. The first is that we happen to be arriving, if this goes through, on the last two days of Carnival, which is the Quebec version of Mardi Gras, but it's not as wild as Mardi Gras, much, much more family friendly. And so on our, on the Saturday of the itinerary, we would be looking to do some of their Carnival activities, so they have sort of an area set up where you pay to get in. It's, of course, included in the cost of the trip. I don't know exactly what they'll have there, but I know when I've looked into it before, there were things like ice fishing and food and like booths, and my students, this year's students are going to be really excited. Every winter, I teach my students Frosty the Snowman in French, and my seventh graders are obsessed with it this year, and Carnival's mascot is the snowman. So there is like a person who dresses up as a snowman and is there, and so I'm going to make them sing to him a song. And then there's a parade that night, so we get to go to the parade and do some of the Carnival activities. So that's actually really cool, and speaking culturally, I mean, that it's such a cultural thing there. So that's, that's really cool, and that's just timing. We would have done it this year, but it wasn't the right timing. So that's one change. And then the other change is we are hopefully going to go back to the circus school, and we went there in 2018, 2019, last time I did the trip. And for the last trips that I've proposed, they just haven't had availability, and every time the tour company said, they're booked out, they're so popular, there's no way we're going to get into it. So this year, I said circus school, and they said, yeah, we think we can make it happen. So we've added the circus school, and so we're keeping in curling, dog sledding, the tubing at the Village Val Cartier, the visit to the Huron Village, which is the First Nations Village, where we learn about what it was like pre-colonial period, and then also adding in the circus school. So very packed, again. The plan is either to stay at the same hotel that we stayed at this year, or one that I keep requesting, and they just aren't able to book us in, but I request every year anyway because I really liked it. So it's either the Delta or the Best Western Centre de Ville, which is where we were this year, which was perfectly fine. And then other than that, it's pretty much the same trip.
Amazing. Wow.
It's great.
I keep telling her that.
School committee members can chaperone. And then you'll see what I mean about the other aspects of traveling.
Yeah, anyone have any questions about itinerary or anything about it?
Any questions, Kelly or Jackie? No? All right. Well, thank you for, as always, putting together such a good info packet for us. You know, I think you, at this point, anticipate any questions that we might possibly have and have already answered them. So any other feedback from the school committee before we move this to a vote? Okay, all right. Well, then I will enthusiastically motion to approve the foreign travel trip to Quebec for 2025.
So move Loomis.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you for coming, and you're very brave to speak in front of a group, both of you, so thank you. Thank you, we appreciate hearing your firsthand experiences. And you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our very exciting, packed agenda of a meeting. But don't feel bad if you need to exit. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So next up on the agenda is a vote to approve an out-of-state trip. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Mr. Cedarbaum, the principal of Blanche Ames, was unable to be here this evening, but this is a field trip that has been done annually. He's provided the details, and they've been before. It is the same trip. It's for the kindergarten classes to go to the Roger Williams Park Zoo in Providence. It's a lot closer than a lot of Massachusetts destinations, but because it crosses state lines, it's under school policy, school committee policy that you would need to approve it. Half of the 206 students will be going on May 14th and the rest on May 15th. The cost to the students is $17 per student. And the PAC or the Parent Advisory Committee is looking to subsidize a large portion of that cost, so there will be no cost to the district for this field trip.
I just have one question, and I believe in the past, if a student has, has a need to pay for this, the school will help out. Is that correct?
That is, that's universal for everything in the school department. When there's need, we account for that.
Thank you.
And it includes field trips, yes, of course.
Any questions or comments from committee members? All right, would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the out-of-state trip to Roger Williams Park Zoo for the Blanche Ames Kindergarten on May 14th and 15th?
Wiseman, so moved.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
And the next item on the agenda is retirement of a paraprofessional at Blanche Ames. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have a paraprofessional retirement to announce, Janet McCarthy. And as usual, I will give you a little bit of information before you read your letter. Ms. McCarthy is currently a paraprofessional at Blanche Ames. She is retiring as of June. She began her career working in the cafeteria at Parkview School in 1989, and then was the food service manager at the Northeast, what was the Northeastern Grammar School. In 1995, she was hired as a paraprofessional at Parkview, and she transferred to Moreau 2018. She's been with the district for a total of 35 years. This is a well-deserved retirement. Janet is lovely. She is a wonderful colleague. We just observed paraprofessional appreciation this week. We are going to celebrate them when we celebrate all of our educators in May, because every adult who works with students is an educator here. Certainly, paraprofessionals provide an extraordinary service that we just can't function without them. So as usual, it's very difficult to see an experienced and wonderful colleague leaving, but it's for a good cause, it's well-deserved, and I wish her many, many happy and healthy years in that retirement.
So I will read her letter, which is one of my favorites. "To all the families of littles that have touched my heart, all of the teachers that I've worked with over the years, I started to list them, but there were just too many, friends I've made, and most importantly, to my family who has always been my biggest fans. I am retiring in June."
Exclamation point.
"I started working for the town of Easton in the kitchen at Parkview School in 1989. I then went on to be the manager for food service at Northeastern Grammar School. In 1995, a one-on-one paraprofessional position for a little girl from Romania came up, and I jumped at the opportunity. This little girl threw me right into the world of special education, and I thought, this is what I was meant to do. Seven years ago, I became a kindergarten paraprofessional and have been there ever since. For 35 years, I have loved all the positions I have held, and I will miss the children and the friends I have made, but it is time. Thanks to all of you, Janet McCarthy." So any?
Of course. So Janet and I grew up together. We graduated from OA, and she is great. She has three wonderful children, and I don't know how many grandchildren she has. She, every time I see her, I'm like, when are you going to retire? Come on. And so anyway, she's, she's just a lovely person, and she'll have time for grandchildren and whatever else she wants to do. So congratulations, Janet.
And she's going to?
Love it.
Love retirement.
She is going to love it. I tell her that all the time.
You tell everybody that. That's why I didn't want you to miss your opportunity.
There you go.
Do any other committee members have any comments? All right, well, yeah, can't really follow Nancy, there's nothing else to say. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Janet McCarthy with regret?
So move Loomis.
Okay, can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
All right. Thank you and enjoy retirement. All right, so next up is the schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, we have approved warrants 061-S, 065-S, 066-S, 067-S, 068-S, and 069-S, and have, to my knowledge, no others that are pending in process at this moment. Okay, and then Lynn, has Marvel been able to join? Okay, Kelly or Jackie, you're not seeing? Okay.
No, I don't see Marvel.
Okay, all right. So we will, at this time, not have the student representative to the school committee update. Okay, so do we need to vote to table, skip that?
I don't think so.
Are you going to table it, or are you going to?
We could, you want to move it to, if she shows up, move it to later?
Yes, yes, all right. So I move to, to temporarily postpone item number seven, which is our student representative to the school committee update until such time our student is present.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percio, yes.
And next up is the vote to approve the Great Minds contract. Dr. Cabral?
All right, the Contract for Wit and Wisdom, which you've heard a lot about, is here, and I will have Mrs. Pruitt go through that breakdown with you and answer any questions you may have.
So last year, we piloted, I'm sorry, last year, we fully implemented the, this past year, okay, let me start over. Hi, all right.
Hi.
Two, last year, we piloted multiple programs, literacy programs, and we did come to the conclusion of adopting the Wit and Wisdom program. This year was the full implementation of the program, which included all of the, the costs for the materials, the books, anything that we might need to set up classrooms for, for the actual implementation of the program. Now that that one year is over, we have before us here a cost for three years of a digital license for teachers and students. That is, you will see that, that is portioned the $80,289. That is for a three-year subscription, so that's a one-time cost. We will not pay that again for another three years. And then the rest of it is for consumables. That consumable cost is for, is each year, so that will be absorbed into the school budgets of $118,736.16, and then shipping and handling. You will also notice that on the proposal, on the actual quote, that they did give us a significant discount on some of the pricing, which we greatly appreciate. So, and, and this is definitely something I recommend. We are, have been very successful with the implementation of the program. It has not been easy. I do not foresee us moving in another literacy direction for a long time, but our teachers have really persevered, and we are seeing the outcome of our students. They are making great progress, and we're extremely, extremely excited about the progress of our students.
And for members of the public who may be following the statewide discussion on reading curriculum, can you just kind of weigh in on whether or not this meets?
Yes.
The highly rated or whatever the criteria are?
Yes, so, so the program that we've implemented with Wit and Wisdom, it is a highly qualify, it does qualify as, as, it's part of the science of reading. It does follow every single aspect of what the governor and the committee is proposing for the reading bill, and so it is considered high-quality instructional material, HQIM, as rated in our curate, which is through, through the Department of Education. But on top of it all, it just really is, we're seeing such a great impact in our students. Prior to the adoption, we've seen a flat line of our, of our literacy scores, and we are just so excited about the growth that our students are showing. One of our amazing reading specialists is here right now from Blanche Ames, and I'm looking at her smiling because we have these conversations all the time, and especially also with Ann Weintraub, our director of curriculum. Just to note, the progress that our students are making is really remarkable.
Do any committee members have any questions or comments for Mrs. Pruitt?
I do.
Go ahead, Lauren. Go ahead, Lauren. Okay. So the three pages here, about 200,000. That's for the next three years.
No. $80,000 of the 2,000 is...
$80,000 of the 200,000?
Yes, that is, that $80,000 is $80,289.
Yeah.
Is a one-time fee.
For the three years.
For the three-year subscription. So we will pay that again three years from now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lauren? What exactly are the consumables?
So the consumables are any of the workbooks that we, that we have. It actually is cheaper for us to buy workbooks than to, than to make photocopies because of the wear and tear of the copy machine, of the paper that we have to produce, so it actually is more advantageous for us to buy the workbooks.
Okay.
And they, and there's a workbook for each, each unit, each module.
That each kid will get, or?
Yes.
Okay. Or receive?
Yes.
Okay. Jackie or Kelly, do you have any...
I have two. One is, just for context, because I wasn't here when the program was selected, when you think about how this is benchmarked against other programs, are there a certain percentage of schools in Massachusetts that are using this? Or how many other options are even available that we could have considered?
Yeah, so the actual adoption process was a whole year-long process. We spent over six months vetting multiple programs. There were about seven programs that we vetted. We had the publishers come to us. We looked through all the materials. There was a committee. There was actually two committees, a literacy pilot committee and a literacy adoption committee. The literacy... Actually, it was a year and a half process, I apologize. The six months of vetting the programs, we then narrowed it down to two programs, which were Wit and Wisdom and EL. We spent six months actually piloting... We had all of our pilot teachers, which were many, pilot both programs. So they didn't pilot one, and then another group piloted another. They all piloted the same program so that we can compare apples to apples. We then came together as a group. We had a very thorough discussion. We removed the names of the actual programs themselves to talk about the benefits of Program A versus Program B. So people were not actually tied or married to a program, and we came up with a determination that Wit and Wisdom, at that time, was better for our district. It is fully aligned with our phonics program, which is Foundations. They have, in K-2, they have our program that we have adopted called G-O-D-S, so that those are all fully aligned with the Foundations program that was already implemented. We are also... We've been piloting an intervention program this year, Just Words, in grades four through eight. And they... It also is... It just works very nicely together with that program. So it's just... It's nice to have the same language go from one program to the next. It's nice to have that common language utilized by all the teachers as well, going from one grade level to the next as well.
Thank you. Super helpful. And then...
The other thing I just wanted to point out is that during that process, the whole district, regardless of position, was trained on the science of reading, preschool through grade 12. And that was a huge undertaking that our reading specialist at Blanche James, Cindy Olson, our literacy coach, Karen Daly, and our literacy coach, Jeannie Baxter, undertook. And they did a phenomenal job of really providing that thorough professional development for the entire district.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
One other question for you on the financials. You mentioned that there's the annual cost that we would be absorbing into the budget. Is that a line item that we have regardless of which program we've selected, and just the dollar amount varies, or is this additive to the budget?
Yes. In the past, it was Reading Street. It was the Reading Street consumables, and now it's just the Wit and Wisdom consumables. But once we surpass a certain amount, the school committee has to approve that. So for the annual costs.
Just understanding if it's net similar or an additive.
And this is now... In the past, Reading Street, for example, the program we used previously, what we had through grade six. We've expanded this program through grade seven, so that's an additional cost, which is really shown to be wonderful.
Thank you.
Do any other committee members have questions? Okay. Can we just confirm, I'm assuming the answer is yes, because I know how we all work, that this does fit into the budget as expected? It's not outside of what we had planned?
Yes, it is planned for in the budget.
Okay, all right.
The two programs have a lot of consumables to them that the students manipulate, and so Reading Street is just being replaced with this one.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Then, let's see, if there are no further discussion, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Great Minds contract?
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second? Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Great. All right. Next up on the agenda is the fiscal '25 budget presentation. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. I'm going to invite you to watch this from the audience as we have a lengthy presentation for you.
You say it with a smile. It's okay. It's great.
It'll be fabulous.
It is going to be fabulous.
While we're just getting situated, and you're getting situated, I want to point out that our Director of Finance, Andrea Starjewski, is partnering with me on this presentation. We certainly created the entire thing together, and we've been working in very close contact with our town administrator and accountant, which is why, if you noticed, they are here this evening. This is actually sort of a three-part presentation in the sense that we are going to give you an idea of our current reality in the budget and projections for next year. What are some cost drivers that are going to affect some decisions that we're making? Ultimately, the challenges we know that we are going to face that we've been talking about for a few years now, and our proposal for the FY '25 budget. We're also going to include in the presentation what our proposal is for FY '25 capital budget, which is on your agenda for a vote this evening. It is part of this presentation. We can circle back to it after the presentation if you want to review it before you do your vote. But the final component to that is Mr. Reed and Ms. Knightengarrel are going to offer you a presentation of the town current reality as well. Probably one of the first questions you're going to instinctively ask, or our audience may be asking once they see the presentation, is why and what's happening? And they are perfectly positioned to explain the broader context of where the town is at right now and why. Again, nothing that you really have not heard for several years, but it is very good information to put the entire presentation in context. And we are very thankful to have them join us this evening and present that information. And once again, I just want to point out that I believe it shows the level of collaboration and trust that the town administration and all of the departments in town have as we, once again, work together to really provide what we think is the best product, financially responsible, and in this case, educationally responsible for the town.
Thank you. I first want to start with a reminder of our budget process. How do we come to a budget in the Easton Public Schools? It is different than probably many institutions, private organizations, and maybe even at the town level. But we are fully collaborative, and we make sure that we incorporate the viewpoints, the opinions, the suggestions of literally the entire staff. And the way we do that is through this timeline. We start... That's okay. We start in December or January. So we start very early, even though, of course, town meeting is not until May, and we don't know the state budget until after that. So it's always an effort in projections, educated projections, that are really sometimes very mercurial. But in our December and January meetings, staff meetings, this year, it was January and February, our principals in each school have a presentation that we created as a full cabinet, that they present at the school level. The first meeting is to bring them back to the strategic plan. We use it in many contexts, but definitely with the budget. We want to get back to the strategic plan. It is not a document that sits on our shelf. We want to make sure that everybody is aware of what we're focusing on, why we're focusing on it, and any gaps that we need to close. And so we look at that strategic plan, and we ask the professionals in the district, what resources or materials might you need to make the gains that we've projected in our strategy? In the second meeting, they then work as a school to come up with their priorities for this. They come to a consensus. At the elementary level, it's often done by grade level. At the high school level, it's often done by department. And so colleagues have the opportunity to work together to say and to ask, what do we not have in terms of human resources, physical resources, supports that we feel would make a difference for our students? Once that is done, after that two months of work, in February, the principals present to the executive team, which is the central administration. We feel that's a really important process because we want every leader in the district to understand the budget of the district. Certainly, we want them to focus on their school, but they're part of a bigger family, we say. And the reason for that is because we get a bottom-line budget, and that has to cover all of the needs in the district. And if we're mono-focused on what our school needs first, but then we explore how that fits into the larger picture, we have a better understanding of why funds might be diverted to different places in a particular year. There might be a particular year where the high school has a lot of educational materials, or the elementary school, for example, has a new reading program. And we need to divert those funds accordingly. It's not always going to be a set number every year that's static for every school. So the principals prioritize their school list. They present it to the entire team. And then the executive team works at the end of February and the beginning of March to create a district prioritized list. What do we see in our district-level data that is lending itself to the resources, the products, the human resources that the staff is articulating? And then the staff is able to get a final review from the principals. The principals get a presentation from the executive team, and then they have all of the information to do either a presentation back, share it with their staff, answer any questions. Public presentations, of course, happen from March to May. That's what we're doing now. We have this first budget meeting. We've, of course, talked about budget, but this is the more comprehensive presentation. We are then going to have a public hearing on April 24th of the school committee, where the budget will be voted on. April 25th, I'm going to present with Ms. Starjewski to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And then, of course, town meeting in May. So that's our structure, and people probably don't think it starts so early. We actually start with conversations even before that. But it is a collaborative effort, and we're very thankful for, literally, the entire team for contributing to our work this year, as always. We set some budget targets for our staff, but also for the public, to help understand what it is we're aiming for when we talk about these priorities, these needs. The main categories are reactive or essential, proactive, and strategic. Reactive or essential are providing the staff and resources that are needed only as a reaction. We're talking about anything additional to a budget every year. And it's only a reaction to something that is either is a current need that is not being met, or a state, or a federal, or even a local mandate, or a special education mandate, or something that is going to fall into arrears if we do not address it immediately. Getting those structures in place are not even necessarily going to mean that we don't have any reactive or essential needs, but we are trying to address reactive or essential needs. The proactive is when we're preparing for something imminent. We're very aware of legislation that's happening with education. We're aware of the Department of Education's regulations and their list of priorities, so we know things that are coming. One example is computer science. Computer science has been talked about quite a lot and is currently going through legislation to become mandatory for all high school students before they graduate. We totally agree that having that conceptual thought and reasoning skills and computer concepts are very important. We have one computer science teacher at the high school right now. So in a very short amount of time, if that is to become mandatory, we would have to add a great amount to our budget. We could not do that in one year. It's something we need to know that is coming and try to prepare for incrementally. However, because it's not currently a mandate, it's not reactive. So that's how we define these needs with staff. And then strategic is planning ahead for things that we know are the challenging and evolving needs of the future, career and higher education, staff and resources that other peer communities already have. An example of that would be foreign languages for children. In a flat world, in a global society, that's the goal. And many communities have had that in place for quite some time. We do not start foreign languages until a short exploratory opportunity in sixth grade. And so that is something that we have wanted to add for several years. One quick example. Now, a few years ago, we had a very difficult year. And unfortunately, it didn't fall on this list of targets. And so at that time, I decided to add two sort of subcomponents that I hope we never get back to regressive, but regressive is when we are literally going backwards. We're adding nothing. We are reducing programs, staff, resources. We're definitely going backwards, and that often takes years to recover from. The reason I had to add that is because we had a year with dozens of layoffs between the town and the schools. The reason I added innovative is because a lot of people were in discussing these targets with me, saying, "Well, you know, we'll probably never get to strategic." That's kind of pie-in-the-sky thinking. And then I realized it really isn't. And our staff really does have the capacity to be very forward-thinking and has the knowledge to teach these concepts and skills and to work within these parameters. Strategic is literally what other districts that we are compared to and that we... Our students are truly competing with in the workforce, what they already have. Innovative are the state-of-the-art opportunities, the cutting-edge pedagogy, content, skills that we could provide. We just don't have those classes, opportunities, resources, facilities. So I just wanted to differentiate that. However, for the purposes of the practice that we do each year, we really focus on reactive or essential needs, proactive, and strategic. Last year, just as a reminder, in FY '24, we were in reactive. We were actually in what I would consider a higher-level reactive, the least bad in the bad, basically. And we were able to add and accommodate for a blow-up of enrollment, which is wonderful. That's great, and we're happy to have it. But it creates the need for additional sections of classes. We added three pre-K sections last year. That means teachers, paraprofessionals. Kindergarten enrollment went up. And then we needed coordination for those programs because they were higher than they had ever been before. So we were able to add some much-needed resources. This year, however, we do find ourselves in a very low reactive, borderline regressive budget. It could be argued that it is a regressive budget, which I will get into a little bit later, because a lot, a large percentage, an uncomfortable percentage of our budget presentation, of our budget proposal, excuse me, this year, is predicated on leveraging resources that are finite, whether they are revolving fund accounts or grants. And I'll get into more detail about that. However, these are positions that we feel are critical for operations next year. That includes potential pre-K and kindergarten sections. I'll show you some data on that, where I think you'll see it's very likely we're going to need that. But also, a multilingual language teacher. We have a much higher percentage of students who are multilingual learners than we do professionals to serve them. I'll show you some data on that. And then an assistant principal at Easton Elementary School... Easton Middle School. And I'll show you some data on that as well. And that's it. Next slide. Not in order of priority. These are the positions I discussed. I just want to note that these would be grant-funded, and the other two would come from the operational budget. Multi-learner requirements, multi-language learner requirements. We talked about this... We've been talking about this for several years in a row because this is one of our needs that we're incrementally adding to. We've had a huge... We've more than doubled our multilingual learners in the last four years. And we have not had the staff to keep up with that. In fact, I would argue that the data is clear. We didn't have the staff appropriate to serve the number of students we had at that time. So we've been adding to that. This shows you the federal and state laws that we are beholden to, and certainly ethically, we want to make sure we serve these learners as well. The next slide shows the service hours. You've also seen this before. A quick recap is we quantify the level of student... of student by their proficiency in English. A newcomer, for example, may speak no English at all. That would be a Level 1. All the way to a transitional student who has been here for several years but needs support to access the curriculum with equity. And in Easton, we separate foundational. The state lets you separate Level 3, however it works in your district, based on the competency and needs of the student. So foundational is 1 to 3.4, and transitional is 3.5 to 6. And you can see in those six levels an indication of the level of need. From 1 to 3.4, the recommended time for a certified licensed ESL teacher with a student is 2 to 3 periods a day that are not less than 45 minutes. That's a great deal of time out of the school day to make sure that the students are accessing the English language, which helps them access all of their curriculum. In FY '19, we had 56 students. In the transitional, which is about one period per day, we had 10 students. That was a total of 66 students, which comes out to a total service hours, so that's not minutes, that's hours of necessary services, of 24,030 hours of service, if every student was getting the level required. For reference, one teacher can typically offer 900 hours of service per year. In FY '23, you can see the number jumped to 104 students. And this year, we have 121 students. What I do want to point out, though, is that even though the service hours dropped for transitional students, they are exponentially, exponentially less in service hours required than this number of students, which is the highest we've ever had for foundational students, resulting in 43,065 hours if we were meeting them optimally. And that is an average because, of course, a Level 1 may have a different number of level hours of 3.4, but it's an average of 2 to 3 per day, periods per day. We currently have six ESL teachers in the district. We're looking to add again this year. It's important to note that only the Level 1 and most of Level 2 students are being served in kindergarten right now. And no students who are identified as multilingual learners are being served as a multilingual learner in pre-K. This position would most likely be dedicated to the elementary level. Middle school administration. This is data on the districts around us, our bordering districts with middle schools that have the enrollment listed. You can see that Easton is second from the bottom in size. We have a, a large middle school. They all serve about the same grades, whether it's 5 through 8 or 6 through 8. And you can see they all have a principal. They all have an assistant principal. Some have two. And many of them also have an associate principal. And you can see the totals. We have two administrators at Easton Middle School, a principal and an assistant principal. There are only four other schools here that do, and all of them are smaller than Easton Middle School. Why does that matter? First of all, one of the influencers is the fact that we do have a new discipline law in Massachusetts. It needed to be a law. We're certainly not, we're certainly not disagreeing with the law, but it requires a tremendous amount of work and attention. And it requires that work and attention from the, the school-based administrators, principal and assistant principal. First, you can see this law brief that states in November of 2022, "Massachusetts schools must take additional steps to reengage students before using suspension or expulsion as disciplinary measures." This is part of the Act of Addressing Barriers to Care for Mental Health. That we support. What needs to go into it is a very different level of work than has been in the past, even prior to November 2022. For example, prior to the amendment, subsection B only required that the decision-maker, the building administrator, "consider ways to reengage the student in the learning process and avoid using expulsion as a consequence until other residents remedies and consequences have been employed." And we've always done that in the Easton public schools. We want to use exclusion from class or from school as a very last measure. However, now, there is a very specific requirement for more information. The amendment expands these requirements. And as a result, before suspending or expelling a student, the decision-maker must employ alternative remedies in response to a specific incident and document their use and results. The alternative remedies required by the law include, but are not limited to, mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and collaborative problem-solving, which, again, we have made use of in the district for many years, several of those. However, the biggest difference is that each of them must be documented by the building principal or, or assistant principal before any exclusion can be considered. So a student essentially cannot be suspended unless there is a significant threat. And the significant threat is a very strong term in the legal sense here. They need to literally have an intent to harm people in the building. Short of that, regardless of what the infraction is, these methods need to be employed and documented and analyzed for their effectiveness before any exclusion can be considered, which includes in-school suspensions, anything that takes them out of the classroom. They, this also includes going to the office. That's an exclusion from an educational experience. Next slide. Another law brief articulates this a little further. "The principal or designee will consider methods to reengage the student in the learning process when deciding disciplinary consequences for the student. Specifically, the principal or designee will consider and use alternative remedies, including but not limited to mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and collaborative problem-solving. The use and results of such alternative remedies will be documented in writing. The principal or designee will consider, use to the extent possible, and document in writing such alternative remedies before the principal or designee may suspend or expel a student. The principal will also implement school or district models to reengage students in the learning process, including positive behavioral intervention and support models and trauma-sensitive learning models. The principal or designee will not implement such models in direct response to a specific incident." Again, we agree. We want to educate students as much as possible. This means every infraction that may have resulted in a suspension in the past, which educators may be used to involving a suspension, whether out of school, in school, or being in the office and outside of class, cannot happen until these very specific requirements are met. And all of this writing needs to be done by a principal or an assistant principal. It's possible, but it's virtually impossible in the school our size, at a middle school age, with two people. Next. To give you an understanding of the incidents they're responding to, I'm going to show first Richardson-Olmsted. We're not going to share Blanche Ames data. The longitudinal data just isn't there yet because we have three schools converging into one, and we don't have apples-to-apples comparison there. What we have here, I, I apologize profusely. This code should say bullying incidents and not bias-based. This orange color is bias-based. So bullying incidents, bias-based incidents, and all incidents. So in addition to the new discipline law, we also have very specific requirements regarding Title IX bullying and civil rights. All of them have their own paperwork and processes, and they must be done exactly right. They must involve very time-consuming investigations and reporting. And that needs to be done by administrators. So to give you an understanding of this, first of all, you can see 2021. I think we all know what that was. Nobody was in school. So there really weren't a lot of infractions to be had. That was COVID. Next, however, I want to point out specifically to R.O. in 2122 is when the new discipline, the end of 22, November 22, that's when the new discipline law came into effect. You would expect to see a little bubble there. However, I was surprised this wasn't more. And in further investigating those elementary levels, we realized our Director of DEIA, Carols Perez, conduct, is, is in the middle of conducting a very extensive discipline project with the assistant principals of every school. And what we realized is while the middle school and the high school were reporting things similarly, Blanche Ames and Richardson-Olmsted were reporting them a little differently. And so now we've been able to get that calibrated. And that happened this year with Ms. Perez joining us. So you can see the number of incidents, of course, have increased. Now, I cannot tell you with confidence that this means that there were necessarily this many more incidents for the bias-related and bullying-related. Here, I don't know if you can see the numbers. It went from 1 last year to 19 this year in bias-based incidents. I cannot tell you that we didn't have 19, or 25, or 2 last year because of the reporting. We've done a lot of education. We've done a lot of bias professional development, unconscious bias, being able to not only identify it, but report it properly. So between the identification of it, having a common definition of it and really understanding what it is better, and having a reporting system that is more consistent and inclusive, that could very well increase the numbers. It's going to be now our task to track this for the next few years to see exactly where this goes now that we have the structures almost completely fine-tuned. Now, with that said, if you look at the next slide, it is comparing the three schools. So you can see that, you can see, first of all, where Richardson-Olmsted is in comparison to the middle school and the high school. A lot of that has to do simply with their age and level of development and the fact that teenagers and young adults have much more, present much more com, present in a much more complicated manner. And so you can see that they are exponentially different. And that's very understandable. However, when you take a look at 2122, you do see a similar escalation as R.O. in the middle school. We are seeing a very different presentation of child right now, post-COVID. And they are presenting with a lot more complex issues, socially, emotionally, mentally, and socially. Socially is missing those social cues at a very developmental part of their school career that are creating some conflicts and creating misunderstandings. And we just need to backfill that level of education in an authentic environment. It's very difficult, if not possible, to teach students social skills, virtually anyone's social skills, in an isolated environment. And so we're backfilling many of those skills for our students right now. What you do see is a little bit different. First of all, it's very predictable from the high school. Again, that escalation. And then we see a decrease here. And I would like to discuss that decrease a little bit because we think, part of, one of the things that we're proposing this evening in the administrator is part of this. We have been able to implement several proactive supports at Oliver Ames. We've been able to do that mostly because we can free up, if you will, the principal to attend a lot of trainings with central administrative staff and with other colleagues at Oliver Ames. We have less opportunity for that with the middle school. For example, one of the proactive supports at the high school is they do have an administrator, an additional administrator. They also were able to participate in a class, a foundations class offered to Oliver Ames administration and district administration. In fact, we have a very big presentation for that class coming up next week. And this is an opportunity that we want to extend to all of the principals. But it's very difficult to leave the building or even be visible in the building if you are caught up in endeavors that three people do at another building. ADL, we do have that at the middle school now. However, it's far more advanced at the high school. So we do see that that is moving down, and we're hoping to realize the same gains in that. The thing that was most attractive to me in choosing this particular program is that it empowers students. It gives students agency and ownership in having difficult conversations and educating one another about DEIA issues. That is happening at the high school right now. Students are presenting to other students in the classroom. That is not yet happening at the middle school. We will get there, but we started at the high school as a kind of a stopgap measure, honestly, and we're moving it down, things that we've been talking about for quite a while. We also had ASCD, which is a, a national curriculum conference. We were able to send six educators, including the principal from Oliver Ames, but only three from Central, three from EMS, and we weren't able to send the principal. Again, we need to free up opportunities for them to participate in the way that they really want to participate. We have student affinity groups at the high school. Again, we're moving that down to EMS. That just started. I think they've had two meetings so far. So we're hoping, once again, that that will have the same effect that we believe it's having at the high school. Positive community norm training. Again, only high school staff trained, but EMS and Blanche Ames staff are attending this summer, so we're looking forward to that. They have more robust clubs at the high school. This is not a slight to any advisor, certainly, and not the students. But just due to the age and the access of students to be able to attend, they do have more robust offerings. And as a result, we're, we're hopeful that those clubs and activities have the outcomes that we all look for in terms of empathy and compassion and working together and problem-solving. And the cultural proficiency training, again, was a professional development that we sent staff to this year. The OA staff was able to go, DEIA director, and I attended as well. Those opportunities are, it's unfortunate when administrators or staff in general need to leave a district, but it is extremely important for us to have these collaborative opportunities together. You will not meet a teacher that says they don't need to have common planning. The same is true of administrators. We need to work together. We need to work together across schools. We need to duplicate, replicate, promote best practices, and help one another in that effort. And so providing resources at the highest ages was needed. But for long-term planning, it's not the most effective model. Needs have begun at a younger age. I'm sure all of you have heard that, from academics to social anxiety to mental health needs. Over time, without additional supports, the issues will affect OA despite the proactive efforts we have in place. And of course, we want to stave that off. The last two positions were pre-kindergarten and kindergarten positions. So to give you context on those, in the last seven years, by August 1st, I just want to remind you that pre-K is a program that students age into all year long. Unlike kindergarten that has a cutoff age or any grade that we get marginal move-ins or transfers out, pre-kindergarten students, as soon as they turn age 3, if they have special needs, they are part of our program. And if we have community peer spots, they become part of the program also when they turn three years old. So that happens all, all year long, every single month, children turning three years old. So to give you context, we have to prepare for this one year ahead, which is very difficult. which is very difficult to do. If there is a new family in town and they have young children, or even if they've been here for a long time. If they have a three-year-old child, we don't know they exist until they let us know they exist, if they don't have an older sibling or a connection to schools. And so we, and we don't know if they're going to send them to our schools. It's not compulsory. Kindergarten's not compulsory in Massachusetts. And so there are lots of daycares and private programs where people choose to send their children. So in August, we try to have an idea, but between our projections and students aging in, in FY19, for example, we were up to 96 by the end of the school year. So that shows you, we had an additional 19 students across the school year. That's an entire section, actually, in a section plus. We really tried to have 15 kids in a pre-K class. Imagine being a pre-K teacher with 15 three-year-olds. The next year, FY20, we had a gain of 22 students. We all know what this was. And then we started building up again. After COVID, when many parents kept their children home, we started increasing. We had a gain of 14 in FY22, a gain of 18 in FY23, so really getting back to pre-numbers. This year, however, we already have a gain of 28, and we still have two months left of school and the entire summer for students to age in. So next year, we already have 139 enrolled, which we only use August 1st numbers because if you're a young parent and your children have never been in school, you start thinking about them going to school sometime in the summer. And so we use our August 1st numbers to be an indicator of how many students we are going to have in the school year. But of course, anyone who ages in in August or September, they become part of the program as well. So it's very difficult to predict these numbers. We already have seven more than we did, than we do today in our pre-kindergarten class. And that's before the summer and all of that aging in. So how many more sections do we potentially need? That's an exercise in educated guesses. And so what we'd never want to do is overbuff our budget so that elsewhere in the district or elsewhere in the town, we're going without thinking these children are coming, but we use our longitudinal data to make that educated decision. And based on this, it seems as though we're going to need at least one pre-K class, if not more. For context, we added three last year. We added two the year before that. This will have to be grant-funded from our revolving account because we don't have extra staff in the budget we're presenting to you this evening. Same thing for kindergarten. So what I did here, because they don't age in, what I did here was show you the number the year prior that we used to try to predict how many students are going to come in. So in FY96, excuse me, FY19, we had 96 students. In FY18, that translated to 247 in kindergarten. So clearly, students show up mostly not from moving into town, mostly from coming from daycares or childcare. We went from 77 to 227, 71 pre-K to 152 kindergarten, 66 to 228 kindergarten. There isn't a clear prediction, you can see. But it's always quite large, the difference. Where we are right now is 114 in our pre-K. It's more than we've ever had for the same number of kindergarten sections. So again, without knowing how many more students are going to register, we're starting with 180. We don't know how many we're going to need. We don't want to overbuffer our budget. We are anticipating we are going to need at least one section, and that is going to have to come from the revolving account because you saw I did not put in pre-K or K teachers to add to this year's budget. They would have to go to revolving account. And again, why choose one position over another for an account? We don't have an account. We don't have, revolving accounts are very specific to their function and purpose. And you have to use allowable expenses. We don't have one, for example, that a multilingual teacher could be put in. So that's the reason for that choice. Overall, budget influencers, why is it a tough year? Contractual salary obligations, of course. That comes right off the top. We are going into budget, excuse me, contract negotiations next year with our three largest bargaining units. So we don't know what the impact on FY26 is going to be yet. We have increased out-of-district costs for students in special education. Last year, I explained to you the unprecedented increase of 14% to programs for students who go to school out of Easton because we are just unable to meet their very specific needs. Before that, the dozen years prior, that had never increased more than an average of 2% and sometimes much less. So to see 14 was shocking for all of us. It had a great impact on this year's budget that we're in right now. Next year, it's almost 5%. It's 4. something high. So it's an almost 5% increase next year over the 14% this year. And those out-of-district costs, as a reminder, can go anywhere from a one daily program at about $30,000 a year to a high-needs residential program that can be over $250,000 a year per student per year until they're 22 years old or graduate. A reduction in minimum aid. Again, Easton is a minimum aid district. We receive each year $30 more per student to educate each child in Easton, $30 more. This year that we're in, there was legislation that moved that to $60 a student. We've been pushing for $100 or more for years. $30 per student is about between $102 and $105,000 per year, depending on the enrollment. Right now, we are being told that the plan is to drop minimum aid for next year to $30 per student again. So that's an immediate decrease of our current budget of over $100,000. Increased elementary enrollment, which I showed you. Transportation contract increases almost 11% this year. We have to provide transportation to our students so that they can get to school. And those costs come from typically one bidder a year. And we have studied their cost drivers and understand their needs, and this is very typical across the state. We have neighbors, neighboring districts, colleagues who have over a 40% increase in a three-year contract. This is very difficult to predict and to sustain. Yes, please.
Just the clarification on minimum aid. So what Lisa or Dr. Kerbal was pointing out was that this year, we're getting $60 per student. So that's a little more than $200,000. And next year, we anticipate that to drop to the $102,000 in total. Thank you.
Yep. So we're having over $100,000 deficit from that number next year. Sorry if I said that differently. Thank you for that. McKinny Vento and DCF. McKinny Vento is, we are required to transport students who are homeless. We are required to transport students in the Department of Child and Family Care. We have students in both categories, multiple students in both categories in Easton. Some of these students are in facilities or homes that are quite a distance away from Easton. By law, we are required to transport them. Similar to pre-K students, kindergarten students, special education students, this is not something that we have very robust or reliable data longitudinally to look at to make those predictions. We don't ever know when a student may be put in such a situation. And we are required, and we want to make sure that they're getting their education, and so transportation can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Now, there are some reimbursements to the town for this. That goes to the town because we're all the same budget. But that's why sometimes our overall percentage is a little bit higher because we are taking into account the increases in our McKinny Vento, our DCF transportation, also student supports, which have increased. Opioid mitigation payments go to the town, and then we receive them through our bottom-line budget. And the same thing for Medicare reimbursements. There are certain therapeutic services, medical services, for which we can get Medicaid reimbursement. Some nursing services, for example, counseling services. We actually had to hire a person to help keep track of all of the paperwork that's required to put in for that government assistance, including time and effort sheets, snapshots, all the logs that they have to keep, all the professionals need to keep of the services that providing and when and what it was. And that person is completely overworked right now. We do not have the funds to hire another person. So we're actually not putting or capturing as much of the Medicaid reimbursement as we probably can if we had more human power. Unfortunately, at this point, we do not. Those reimbursements, again, go to the town, which goes in the overall budget, which is then parceled out to the departments as part of this exercise. And grants. Not just ARPA and ESAR, which are the federal funds that were tied to COVID relief. Those are ending. And so are a lot of services that were put in place to help students get back on track. As you see from the many different types of data that we provide, whether it's academics or discipline or referrals or mental health needs, they are all increased. They are, we are closing those gaps, but they're certainly not to pre-COVID levels yet. So the fact that those are expiring when we still need them is completely concerning. And I want to make you aware that those are coming to an end in this next year. But so are entitlement grants that we receive from the state and federal government that are being significantly reduced. For example, thank you. For example, these are, you see the function of each grant and what we use it for in the district. We have special education, mostly used for para, I think all used for para-professionals. Early childhood that we use for para-professionals in the pre-K and K classes. Title I, which serves low-income needs. Those are our interventionists. Interventionists have been one of the things that we have put into place since COVID that have made the most extraordinary difference in backfilling foundational conceptual skills for students so that they can equitably access the curriculum and be successful. Our multilingual learner grant, you can see, is not very big, but we do make use of it for sure. Title IV, which is for professional development, and a health grant. What I would like to point out is that the Title I grant is the only one we have been told what we will be getting next year. So as you can imagine, when you're using one, almost one and a half million dollars of grants as part of your program, to not know what that's going to be the next year is another exercise in predictions. We have been notified about Title I. And that Title I, as you can see, is a reduction of 52% in one year. So that is another one, over $150,000, that we cannot depend on next year. Following that logic, if you notice, each of the years that Title I increased, all of the other grants increased as well. The only one that didn't was the Title II-A for professional development, and it went down slightly. So we are extremely concerned that if we face even a 20% decrease in these other grants, we are going to have a shortfall of half a million dollars or more next year. That's another concern, that we just do not have that information yet. Sometimes we don't get that information until late August. Bottom line, here is the proposal. We had reported to you, excuse me, a bit earlier because the first thing we do in this exercise, Andrea and our payroll supervisor, and they do the payroll rollover, which is all of our current employees with all of the contractual obligations tied to them rolled over to the next budget. At the time we reported, it was 4.99%. We've been able to further refine it. It's 4.97. Then the regressive or essential staff brings that to 5.43. We then took a look at our obligated expenses, our contractual expenses for next year in operating costs, transportation, out-of-district expenses. And that brought us to 8.07%, which we did present to the town administrator, and he promptly fell on the floor, and we helped him up, and it was fine. So clearly, we knew it was untenable for this town to provide 8.07%. So we had to go back and basically value engineer. We did that exercise. We did that by leveraging finite resources. And I'm going to highlight this again with another slide because this is very important for future budget considerations. First, we put more interventionists into the ARPA grant available through the town. That's expiring. We froze positions that don't necessarily need to be put in place this year. For example, a one-to-one para for a student that left the district. But as soon as we get another student that requires a one-to-one para, that needs to be in place again. We have no choice. Special education potential student graduations. I'm putting potential there because we have students that may be graduating from a special education program for which we pay tuition next year. They're on target. However, should something happen and they don't graduate, we are not going to realize that savings. But we had no choice to put it in other than to put it in as a contingency. We could not find other ways to meet that gap. So please keep that in mind. Same is true for potential special education prepayments. This is if we have $200,000 left in our budget at the end of this fiscal year, we will prepay special education tuitions for next year, if it is available. We moved additional para-professionals again to a grant. Special education transportation savings. David Twombly and Craig Davidson, the Director of Student Services, was able to negotiate some savings with transportation, $60,000 there. And funding curriculum costs through the Town ARPA Grant, $58,000 of the materials that you heard Mrs. Pruitt speak of earlier are going to come from the ARPA Grant. That's a total reduction of just over $1 million or 2.28%, which is what brings us to the $49,748,315 proposal we are making this evening to the school committee for the consideration, which is a 5.78% increase. Mr. Reed and Ms. Nightengale are going to give you more context of how that fits into the town budget at this time. Not this time, but how it fits into the budget at this time. It's okay. Okay. I know you're excited. I get it. Okay. I need to highlight these considerations, okay? So for FY25, let's please remember, we have revolving funds that have, these revolving funds are the ones that have money in it that looks like, wow, that's a significant amount of money. That's great. You've got $2.2 million there. What's the problem? It's very important to understand that two full-time people are already coming out of that current balance every year. And if we need to add just one pre-kindergarten section, that's 165,000. Pre-kindergarten requires one teacher, two para-professionals. We also put in a larger placeholder for the teacher because our pre-K teachers are double-certified. It's a special education program, so they need an early childhood license, and they also need a special education license. Much harder to find. Definitely want experienced people in that position. That's one section. So combined, you see, we only have a couple of years here of sustainability of children that aren't going away. And that doesn't include if the fall- that aren't going away, and that doesn't include if the following year, we have more pre-kindergarten students, as the trend indicates. The kindergarten line, if we add one section, that's $95,000 a year. Again, a finite line. We don't charge kindergarten tuition anymore, so nothing's going into it. So this would spend that down. It's about two years. That's a teacher and a para professional. Athletics. What comes out of it right now, transportation, athletic department, software, sporting goods. But that's also the account that we have assured the town, we are trying to add to incrementally every year. We haven't been. This is what's currently in it, to fund potentially a $1 million project at Moscato Field as early as 2029. And facilities. This is miscellaneous repairs, small equipment, custodial overtime. That's seasonal as well, because overtime for custodians takes place when we have inclement weather, and they need to do snow removal. That's a bulk of overtime right there. Of course, we don't know what the weather's going to be. Building maintenance and facility software comes out of that. But as you'll see when we show you the capital proposal, we are not putting in for any facilities' needs other than the two items you're going to see in capital for the next three years. So we need to absorb that, and it's going to come directly from this revolving account. Those needs, those repairs are not going to go away, and we are not putting them forward for capital. School lunch, right now, it is free. The legislation does state pending appropriation, which means if we can afford it. We have heard that the state may not be able to afford that into perpetuity, even next year. We did not find out that it was fully funded until August this year. This past August, we found out it was being funded for the start of school in September. What does that mean for us? Well, first of all, we pay seven and a half employees, just the Easton Public Schools staff, that we contract with Witsen's, but 7.5, or seven full-time and one half-time person are still Easton Public Schools employees until they retire, they're legacyed into the contract. They get paid for out of the school lunch revolving account. And capital improvements, just to give you a perspective, in FY23, there was 171,000 in capital improvements across the school, whether that's freezer systems or ovens. They're all industrial. Because we did not find out until late August that lunch was free next year, we did do a study with Witsen's and found that they anticipated over a $150,000 deficit, including all potential revenue, if we did not have the funded, the funding from the federal government. And so, could be plus or minus 200,000. As we all know, the food costs have increased quite a bit, even over the last year. One year without that is going to be $200,000. That's basically a year, if our projections are correct and food prices don't go up, maybe a little bit more. These are not, by the way, buffers that we're going to keep in place. These are things that we expect to be spending out of, that are going to be depleted in a very short amount of time. These are important considerations. I'm just going to put it all together for you here with Andrea. First of all, I just want to remind you, we're putting additional pre-K staff in revolving. We're freezing some special ed support positions. We moved additional interventionists into ESER. We're moving additional para professionals into the 240 grant, and our SEA program, our summer enrichment academy for students, which has had incredible gains for our kids and reduced summer learning loss. Those are all grant-funded or from a finite revolving account right now, and grants that are expiring. You know about those. We just added to that this year. In addition to that, in order to make that, to close that gap, we are freezing our capital's facilities requests. Our curriculum materials came out of ARPA, overall curriculum materials. We have frozen some Unit A positions that are going to need to be reinstated. For example, we have a special education program that doesn't have a student moving into it next year. So we're combining programs, but we already know that the year after, we have students moving into it. So we will need to fund that position again. We do not have a choice. If we cannot educate that child appropriately, they get outplaced for tuition. So either way, it's going to cost us. So that's a temporary fix. Additional kindergarten and revolving materials and supplies. We had every department in school cut all materials and supplies by 10%. That was $83,000. Any needs that we don't meet next year are going to need to come from that revolving account. Early college, our efforts in early college have been funded through the ARPA grant, which is expiring. Rides and RMK, those are two efforts in our DEIA work, which are critical. Reimagining integration is a, is a program originating at Harvard University that we have been participating in for professional development and raising multicultural kids, has provided services directly to our children. Those are currently in grants that are expiring. That's a total of over $2 million, meaning if we don't move any of these things into the operating budget next year, they will not, they will no longer exist, unless we cut positions or programs in the school to take their place. That comes out to 4.44%. That means, when we go to look at the budget at the end of next year for FY26, before we do the initial payroll rollover, or any essential reactive needs, or contractual obligations, we are already at 4.44% of current services that will need to be put into the operating budget. That's the fiscal cliff that we've been talking about for several years, both at the school and town level. I just, I know you've heard it, but I need to say it once again, and I just want to make sure it's very clear, that this is where we're starting the next budget. This is the way we see we may be able to get through FY25, but they are expiring for FY26. Before I end and go to capital and invite our friends up, I just want to remind people of our per pupil expenditure in this town. Per pupil expenditure is the cost of education in that particular town. It's comparing apples to apples. It includes healthcare, excuse me, that in our town, for example, is on the town level, but it includes that. Every dime in the town budget that is put toward educating our children. You can see, the state average is $20,000, over $20,000 per student. The highest in our DART comparison schools is Tewksbury at 60, excuse me, 20,674. And you can see, Easton is down here at the bottom at $16,635. Why did I choose these schools? What does DART mean? DART are the districts that the Department of Education chooses to compare our achievement in Easton to, in terms of our accountability status and our achievement in education. We, I simply lifted those schools. So we are expected to compete with these schools. Our students are expected to have the same level of education and output with this much less dollars per student. The next slide shows another comparison. These are just our touching, bordering neighbors, our immediate neighbors, that we compete with for our staff. We have to have a competitive salary. And so what that does, if we're making, if we're, we have so much less to offer for our budget, and we're providing a comparable salary in order to get the best candidates who make all the difference in the education of the children, the entire rest of the program has to suffer. And you can see where we're at, at that point, where we've made every efficiency possible over many years, over a decade. We've got our budget very, very thin, according to every audit that we've had. The highest district is Brockton at almost 21,000. The state average, which I always present Easton as being above the state average in every other measure of competency and capacity, including academic achievement. That's $20,000 a student, and Easton is second from the bottom at $16,635 per student. What does that mean? If we got, if we received, just the school department, not the town, if we received the same per pupil expenditure as our next neighbor that receives more, that would come out to an additional $5.6 million a year. We are putting out, the product we are putting out, and the experience we're putting out for our children with $5.6 million less every year. If we look at the state average, we would have $12 million more every year. Before we get to questions, if you could go back to capital real quickly, please? As I mentioned earlier, we're asking for two things. Upgrade of the security systems and our technology. We were literally forced, like every other district, to go one-to-one during the pandemic. We were fortunate to receive federal funds in order to buy that equipment and to improve our infrastructure. However, that has ended. And there are no continuation grants or funding. Those need to be replaced. We have extended our replacement of individual devices in the district as far as we possibly can. We replace laptops, for example, or Chromebooks every six years. That's more than the rest of the town even. And then you have to remember our users. We love them, but they're not an adult sitting at a desk. They're a child, as young as second grade, taking their Chromebook in their backpack on the bus to their sports game, put on the field, taken home. Parents, you see what happens to them at home, brought back to school. We have a procurement plan of every six years, because we've had to stretch it out as far as we can. Our tremendous technology staff, led by Livia Ramus, the director of IT, has a literal computer cemetery, where she piece, they, the team pieces together every single possible means of keeping them alive for as long as we can. Since COVID, we actually don't even have a concrete procurement understanding yet, because it's only really been two years, and the computers have been dying due to misuse, or accidents, or just wear and tear. But we won't know that for a few more years. So we've stretched it as much as we possibly can. What's that's going to be in the future, we don't know. But we are going to be unable to keep that going without, it costs far more than 200,000, but we have budget lines. We're asking for 200,000 to keep that technology going. And then, our security systems, that is a $1.5 million request this year. It's part of a bigger project that has been very public. We have a design team working on that. We have an owner's project manager. This is the five-year plan of those two things. You can see, for the first three years, we've taken out any other needs, furniture replacement, or any other needs in athletics, or any school. And we don't have BA on there because we're hoping there are no needs, but they're not included either. Our other needs in terms of security upkeep, potentially, high-efficiency boilers, so that, again, long-term plans of saving money eventually, carpeting, anything else in our schools, and certainly, anything unexpected. We have bumped out all the way to FY28. So our facilities account, our revolving account, is, it doesn't make a tremendous amount of money each year. We do not charge everyone. We don't charge community rec, youth leagues. We do have to revisit that structure, unfortunately. That revolving account is not going to last, and the facilities only age every day. Fortunately, we have some beautiful facilities now that we won't have to touch for a while. But others, the auditoriums, the cafeterias, classrooms that get used often, they do have wear and tear, and we are responsible for fixing that. Now we'll scroll down to any questions on my presentation and Andrea's presentation before we give you the town context for all of this.
So, committee members, do you want to stay where we are for your questions?
Okay. Jackie has a question.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Jackie.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. That was very informative, a little scary. So I have a few questions. The first is about the additional assistant principal at EMS. Do you see this position as being the same, having the same role as a current assistant principal, or do you see, you know, to kind of support her? Or do you see this as having two assistant principals with different functions?
No, we see it just as it is at the high school. We have two assistant principals with assistant principal functions. Most of the disciplinary activities, the core appearances, the outreach to DCF and so forth, happens at the assistant principal level, which allows the principal to be very proactively involved in professional development, in their own professional development, in calibrating the practices across schools in the district.
So how would you, in order to make sure things are done equitably, how would you split up tasks between those two, or has that not been kind of looked at yet?
I would not do that. That is a building-based decision. The current principal is taking on a lot of responsibilities that the additional assistant principal at the high school is taking on there. So we want him to focus on the instructional leadership in the building, and we need to build the capacity of the staff at the elementary, at the middle school to keep up with the growth and the need.
The other question I have about this is, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said a lot of the, the extra challenges in the middle school have to do with social-emotional issues with the students, kind of post-COVID. Would it make more sense to add an adjustment counselor to kind of proactively deal with those issues rather than coming on a kind of, it's already happened and now we have to deal with it end?
So I want to make sure that we, that I'm clear, that discipline does not mean consequences. Discipline is proactive. It's about the strategies that you actually saw listed in the law. And those need to be done by an administrator. Those aren't done by a school adjustment counselor. That's a very different function. This is more in the realm of discipline, interventions, disciplinary programs, freeing the principal up for academic visioning, things that other principals are able to do in their schools. It's a completely different position. And as you saw in the laws, they are the function of a principal or an assistant principal. They are not, we don't want our school adjustment counselors to be doing disciplinary investigations all the time. That's not their function or the relationship we want them to have.
Do you feel like at EMS, you have enough adjustment counselors, or do you feel like that's something that would benefit the student body as well?
We are always in need of school adjustment counselors. We just added one in the district. However, in our exercise, it did not come up as a priority from the staff to me, from Mr. Carroll.
And you have, there's two at EMS right now. And you have, there's two at EMS right now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My other questions about ARPA and SRO, when are those expiring? I kind of have lost track.
December.
This December, 2024.
They do, and there are different, a little bit different parameters for each. We can encumber funds by that date, expend funds by that date, and SRO III, I think, has been extended to, that we can encumber by that date instead of spend by that date, which is a significant difference for us, encumbering and spending it.
And Carol has her hand raised to maybe?
I just wanted to add that education is 2.5 in the adjustment counselors at the middle school.
Yes, but we are adding an adjustment counselor at Richardson-Holmsted, and so the, the school adjustment counselor is going to be able to be full-time at the middle school. So it's actually increasing by .5.
Okay.
Jackie, did you have any additional?
No, I think I might have some, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Happy to come back to you. Other committee members. Nancy?
On the vice principal thing, so OA has 300 more students than the middle school.
They have over 200. They don't have 300.
So aren't there 1,200 kids at the high school?
No.
How many are at the high school?
1,100.
And 900 at EMS?
Not quite, I don't have it in front of me, but it's 800 and some odd, yeah.
So it's around, it's around 200. So I guess what I'm going to ask is that when, now, let's say this happens, we can afford it, whatever, then is RO, are you going to be asking for another assistant principal at RO?
No, that's why I put RO in as the comparison for you to see the number
Yeah.
of disciplinary infractions. It was 19 as opposed to 600.
Right.
So that is not, no.
Okay.
That's not typical of an elementary school. It's a large school, but so is Blanche Ames. But right now, the priority is the middle school.
Lauren, did you have any questions? And I'll go to Kelly, did you?
We also, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
That is more unique to the middle school in terms of when we see bullying manifesting, whether it's cyberbullying or in person, that manifests at the middle school. And bullying is a very, a very complex issue. It is a legal term. It requires a very specific set of investigations and documentation, very similar to the discipline law. And we do see that a lot more manifest at the middle school, which is why we try to help them and be proactive and educational and use restorative practices with them so that that doesn't then carry to the high school.
I do have.
Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
My question is, when you were describing the need for the additional assistant superintendent and, I mean, assistant, right?
Sure.
Principal. Sorry.
There's plenty to do.
You, you were mentioning the amount of paperwork and, and
Investigations.
and investigation and time away from handling the situation. So is it, is it the actual amount of disciplinary action that needs to take place? Or is it the amount of additional paperwork that a, that could be, you know, an additional clerical or something?
A clerical aide cannot do an investigation or write a report, and they can't do a bullying report, and they can't do a civil rights report. It has to be an administrator. We absolutely would have hired a clerical aide if that could have been done. No question about it. It's very specific who it has to be done by. It's in the law, it's a requirement, it's the function of an assistant principal?
Lauren, did you have anything else at this time?
I do, actually.
Oh, go ahead.
And it was so long ago in your presentation that I'm not even sure I know what this means in a word of town. PCN training?
Yes.
Is at our Blanche Ames and Easton Middle School for next year?
This summer, actually. PCN is what we've been talking about in our leadership team here at the table and also at our Superintendent Advisory Committee, the Positive Community Norms.
Right.
Yes, that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Oh, that has been done, we have OA staff that has participated, I have participated. We don't have any other school that's participated. So as part of our, this, this problem-solving practice, we have EMS staff and Blanche Ames staff attending this summer.
Why not RO?
Because the two people that are attending are union representatives, and we look at their role as leaders in their unit, that they are going to be able to help us share that information across the unit. We didn't have enough money to send someone from RO, but we definitely plan to do that in the future. I think you saw by the, by the infractions on the chart that Richardson-Holmsted, while any infraction is a concern, is not at the level of the secondary. And one of our union leaders that was willing to go and is very excited to learn about this is at Blanche Ames, so we felt that that was very good for the pre-K to five age span. Sure.
And Kelly, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a few. Thank you, and thank you for the rich presentation and education as we went through everything. A few questions I have. The drop in incidents at OA and the, the role of the other programs was a fairly compelling data point for me. If I'm understanding kind of what you've explained fully, the reduced number of incidents is not necessarily due to the fact that there's the additional assistant principal there because the assistant principal is dealing with the workload of those incidents.
Can you go back to that slide, please? So if you look at the list, we're actually trying to, no, yes, thank you. We're actually trying to advance the opportunities for the principal with the assistant principal. The principal is doing a lot of these investigations right now as well, just by the sheer number of them. Out of this list, foundations, ASCD, student affinity groups, positive community norms, and cultural proficiency training are all things that we would like the middle school administration to participate in, that they haven't been able to participate in. So it's almost everything on this proactive list.
So the challenge is because of the high number of incidents, we can't get to the proactive list? Is that a fair understanding?
We are very limited in what we're able to do, yes. And it's not just the number of incidents. Again, it's the proactive approaches and the multi-pronged effort that goes into helping a student who has an infraction. Both of those together, it's, it's too much for one person. And that's why the principal has to participate. We don't have a choice. We've actually sent central office over staff quite a few, over quite a few times to assist with investigations and reporting.
I guess I was picking up on Jackie's thread a little bit, maybe, around just trying to understand if the social-emotional issues are so strong for this group of kids, is there an opportunity to leverage some of the proactive items to start to address the social-emotional challenges that they're having so that we don't even get to the incidents?
We are, we are adding to the school, a school adjustment counselor. As I said, we're doing that, well, we had it open this year. It's in the budget. We just did not have an applicant that met our needs, according to the principals who interviewed them. But these are different needs. These are here, these are needs that are here now. We're getting a lot of parent feedback about bullying, about cyberbullying. According to the SRO, over 90% of his work at the middle school is for those two issues alone. We are doing a lot of student services in those areas. A school adjustment counselor pays a very valuable role, but we do not expect a school adjustment counselor to teach kids about cyberbullying or to do professional development with the rest of the staff so that they understand how students are presenting today. Students are presenting very differently than they did before COVID. There's nothing wrong with the capacity of our staff right now. They just have not had this presentation and number ever before. We need to provide the skills and development for them to have trauma-based decision-making, restorative practices in the classroom, understanding the implications of the law and what needs to happen before it gets referred to the office. School adjustment counselors do not do that kind of instruction.
Is this a?
This is something that's going to have a benefit across the entire school.
Is this a multi-year commitment to our budget? Or is this a temporary position until we've addressed some of the issues and gotten to a more proactive approach in the development?
No, the law is staying. It's not going away. We're always going to need to do this. All, the, the school itself, when it was built, due to the, just the size of the school and the age of the students in it, it was built for two assistant principals. It has two assistant principal offices in it because it was always intended to have two. If you look at our comps from everyone around us, they all have that many of administrators or they're smaller than us. This is not unique to Easton. This is really endemic across the entire Commonwealth.
Do we have a breakdown of the number of incidents per grade level?
I don't have them here tonight, but I can give them to you.
Okay.
We just have it in aggregate for the school, for the presentation.
And one other question that I had, the data that you showed on the comparison to other schools had a third category of principal listed. I believe I wrote it down as associate principal, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
What's, why consider an assistant principal versus associate principal? And would that be more budget favorable for us?
It is more budget favorable, exactly. An associate principal is closer to, in a principal, it's like a co-principal. It's more expensive.
And how many-year contract would this be?
Our administrator contracts right now are three years.
And Kelly, did you have anything else? I did see Jackie's hand up, so Jackie, I will get to you in a second.
I don't have anything else at this moment.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Okay, all right. So Jackie, and then Marvel, if she has any questions, but thank you for letting me know that she was able to join. Okay. Go ahead, Jackie.
This is a little off top, I mean, it's on the same topic, but a little off-budget. I assume your, the middle school is keeping data on these incidents. If there's kind of a trend, like you said, a lot of them are bullying or cyberbullying, are they looking at, you know, grade levels? Are they breaking them down by gender and race and whether a student is on IEPs? Are they looking at how many in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, emergency removals? Are they keeping track of all of that? And is that any kind of data that we would be able to see?
Yes, of course they are. That is actually the project that I referred to, that the DEIA director is doing with every assistant principal right now.
Okay. And will, when that is complete, will you be able to, to see that?
Of course, it's public information.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So before we go back and see if anybody who's already spoken has any questions, Marvel, if you can hear us, if you have any questions on the budget, feel free to chime in.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, thank you, by the way. I just had a question about the, like, regarding the disciplinary actions. Does the guidance department play like a role in these like situations? And if so, has there been any consideration, like, employing another guidance counselor?
Yes, thank you. So again, we didn't get a request for a guidance counselor, but we, everybody has a different function, and I just want to make sure, Marvel, I'm not sure when you joined in, but one of the things I said is I think we may, we all have a slightly different definition of discipline. Discipline is not just consequences. So every educator is a disciplinarian. We're all responsible for teaching students about discipline, helping them to make good decisions, redirecting them, using restorative practices. So everybody does that. In terms of consequences, that's something that comes from an administrator only, building principal or a building assistant principal.
Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Marvel, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. And any other committee members? I had just one, thank you, the committee members actually, I mean, your presentation answered almost every question I had, and if not, it's already been asked. This is more of just a thread I'd like to pull. So with the pre-K enrollment increasing and given that it is a special education program, just curious as to, so approximately a little less than half of the students who enroll in pre-K by the structure of the program receive special education services.
Correct.
Do we have any thoughts or trends on how many of those we would expect to see having a long-term continued special education need that we would need to prepare for in terms of programming capacity or powers or anything like that versus, you know, stuff that's more transition, transitory for students of that age?
That's a great question. It's very difficult to answer. Craig Davidson is here, he can join in if he wants, but a special education service, for example, well, first of all, all special education services are meant to be, to help students access the curriculum, and almost all of them are meant to be weaned at some point. When that's going to happen, we cannot predict when that will be for a student. If a student needs to continue, we can't predict. One special education therapy, for example, is speech therapy. Do we expect a student, every student in pre-K who has speech therapy to have speech therapy until third grade, fifth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade? Someone might. We certainly don't expect all of them to. How many of them be, will be, or how many of them will have expired services? It's, they're completely unique people, and it's almost impossible to predict. And even if someone didn't present in pre-K, they could present later in need of speech therapy services, or we could have a student move in that needs speech therapy services. So it's a very difficult thing to predict. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Davidson?
The preschool involvement in general across the state is up.
Okay.
Two-fold over the last three, four years. Since COVID hit, early intervention is not fully backed up, forward to full capacity yet, so we're seeing a lot more students fall behind for special education services where we're a full inclusion model here in Easton. Every student that we involve, we also need to involve up here, so that increases our overall program needs. I know last year I was actually interviewing during this time in part of the budget process. Last year we talked about those same exact trends coming to our preschools. So seeing the need of, I know your special education numbers rising, you're also opening up one peer slot per student. We have to stay eight to seven, eight typically developing peers, seven students with individual education program. And then what happens from there is once you get that 15 mark, unless we get, usually we used to be able to get a waiver from the Department of Ed, that's a longer option. You have to open up a new program. So that's what happened previously. It was a tremendous amount of support, a whole new program last year. Very correct, was that.
Okay, so if, if I'm hearing you correctly, the, because I know I was attributing part of the increase, of course, to the attraction of a new school and, you know, that brings new families into town.
Yes, that's also true.
But it sounds like it is part of a larger trend that is also related to an interruption of early intervention due to COVID and childcare disruptions and all of that. So we may be seeing a bit of a bubble, potentially.
Okay.
All right, thank you. It's, it's good info.
I just want to point out one thing about this slide, because I didn't hear it said, so I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
It's clear that on some of them where, like, more in the middle, it says one, one, and then the total is three. We all know that one plus one is two. But the, the extra one is a dean of students. So that's the line that's missing right here.
Yeah.
So I was just, I was just back checking to make sure that it was, and seeing if Galvin is a, is a dean of students.
Okay.
And so I'm just checking.
Thank you. Yes, these numbers are correct. These numbers are correct. Thank you for saying that. I can't remember if I said it, I probably didn't. We excluded deans because we do not currently, no offense to any other district, and it's probably very warranted, and I'm sure it's working very well. and it's probably very warranted and I'm sure it's working very well. We don't currently subscribe to the dean structure. A dean is typically a dean of discipline who only handles discipline all the time. Those aren't the kinds of relationships we're looking to create with students. That's one of their functions. We see the role a lot differently and more all-encompassing in all of our schools. Thank you, Mrs. Pruitt.
Anything else from committee members before we move on to the next budget presentation?
Okay. Go back to the first slide because they don't have slides. I'm going to welcome Connor Reed and Wendy Nightingale to come up and join us in their explanation of the town situation at this point.
Thanks. Oh, I got to take it too. Okay. Thank you. Oh, my God. What do you need back? Need this back? This? We are here. Yeah. We have this.
No, I don't think we got.
That one's different.
Sit wherever you're comfortable. I know you're very familiar with these as well.
I am. I love, I love how it's.
I don't need the hard copy. I didn't know what folks had digitally or not, so.
The school committee has it.
Okay. Awesome. Wendy, you're right?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Thank you, Chair Starr, for inviting us in tonight. Before getting into, I don't have a nice-looking presentation. I apologize. I have a lot of paperwork that you've been provided, a couple of prepared remarks. And Wendy has a live spreadsheet that we can go through, which is a bit dry, but it's really important. And before getting into anything that I've prepared, I just want to touch on what Dr. Cabral noted, that the schools here and the town have been able to make, you know, important progress over some really tough years, working together. I think we've worked together for seven or eight years now. And we really value that relationship. It's easy to get along when things are going smooth and when finances are easy. The rubber kind of meets the road when you have tough budget years. And so we appreciate being invited in to the school committee meeting, being part of this process, so we could have this conversation. So Wendy and I are here tonight. Wendy Nightingale is Finance Director for the Town of Easton to support the discussion around the fiscal '25 budget ahead of its finalization. Like to talk a bit about the town's reserve fund capacity. If any of you have weathered a presentation of mine at town meeting, you've probably heard me say structural revenue deficit a lot. So we'll talk a bit about that tonight. And then the relationship between the Easton Public School budget and each of those items. So we appreciate the severity of the cost pressures that are on the public school budget in the coming year. As on the town side, we're facing, you know, many of our own challenges and especially in fixed cost areas like healthcare. Just by way of example, the fixed insurance cost increases alone next year that we are forecasting at about $1,242,000. That's more than if you take every single town department, police, fire, public works, all town hall departments. All of those departmental requests for increases going into next year are eclipsed just by the fixed costs of active and retiree health insurance increases, by pension assessments, property casualty and liability insurances. So while it's cold comfort, I think it's really important to emphasize that we appreciate the hard work of your budget process and also that we are not alone, whether with the town and the schools or just in our kind of collective industries in the public sector and education in the Commonwealth. Heading into fiscal '25, if you read The Globe or other regional papers, you'll see there's a lot of particularly school districts and cities and towns that are in incredibly tough situations heading into next fiscal year, often related to fixed cost pressures that Dr. Cabral touched on, particularly things like transportation, special ed. So as the school committee is aware, Easton's preliminary budget deficit for fiscal '25 this year was one of the worst that we've seen. It started out at over $3 million. Typically, that number, when we start the budget, is always, there's always a gap at that preliminary cut in February. It's usually between $1 and $2 million. And so we have issued two adjustments to the budget since February to bring that deficit down to about $700,000 through a combination of revenue estimate updates, reducing town department budget requests, and programming a meaningful amount of reserves that we've worked together with the community, the voters and the schools to exercise a tremendous amount of discipline on building those accounts in the past seven years. That $700,000 remaining deficit assumed the last placeholder for an Easton Public School budget of 6%. So we did make some progress already tonight. So that's great. To support tonight's discussion, we provided the committee with the most recent budget change memo as well as a report on the town's longstanding structural revenue deficit. It's a bit dry, but it's, I think, a really good resource. As folks on the committee, I think, are well aware, one of the main contributors, the main drivers to that structural revenue deficit is that Easton has been a minimum-made community for quite some time. Dr. Cabral referenced that we were fortunate enough in the past couple of years, I think two years, minimum made was moved up to $60 per pupil. That's appreciated because that's an improvement over 30, but a $30 increase per pupil of 100,000 is roughly equivalent to one quarter of 1% of the public school's operating budget. When you put that into the broader town budget of all the town departments, the fixed costs, which is in excess of 100 million, you're talking one one-thousandth of the budget. Wendy has shared a few forecasts with the committee for fiscal '25 through fiscal '28. So as with any forecast, these are estimates. They can and they will change. And the confidence that we have necessarily decreases farther into the future that those numbers go. So that's me being the kind of chief bureaucrat saying the red print that says for illustration purposes is important. We're not attempting to predict that in fiscal '27, those numbers will be exactly what's there. But these are informed by the trends that we've been seeing now. And so what these show are Easton Public School fiscal '25 budgets at levels of 5, 5.5, and 5.78%. The relative reliance on reserves to fund the budget at those levels. So when I am using the phrase reserves, I'm referring to free cash and stabilization funds, which are built up at the kind of town-wide budget level, as well as what the potential increase in estimated budget shortfalls we are likely to face if current conditions hold in fiscal '26, '27, and '28 that will be influenced by the choices that we all make this year. So Wendy will walk everyone through the modeling and these forecasts. And as they will show, and as Dr. Cabral alluded to, with, you know, a bit of a cliff, I always don't like that term, but there's not a better one, facing us in '26. Based on the cost trends we're seeing, particularly fixed costs over which the town and schools have little to no immediate control. Those are contractual costs. Those are state or federal mandates. It's more likely than not that the current level of services in Easton cannot be sustained over the next many years. So Wendy, I believe, has the forecast pulled up on screen so that the committee can ask questions about the assumptions that are baked into it, see what impact shifting some of those assumptions may have in the coming years, and just to kind of aid in the discussion. So I'd ask Wendy just to give a brief overview of the forecast. And I'd encourage members to weigh in with questions as we go.
So this forecast shows a high-level summary of the town's operating budget position, starting with fiscal '20, '25. It basically starts off where the budget change memo, the second one, came out as far as all the revenue assumptions. And the budget is not balanced, but in this scenario, we can balance the budget by getting town budgets down at a 4% increase and then putting the school department at various percentage increases. And basically, any difference that remains left or left, we can fund it to the financial costs.
That wasn't on, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, my mic wasn't on. So this is, this is, it's a high-level summary of the town's budget. We've taken some of the revenue categories and just rolled them up into totals so that you can see a three-year projection, building off of the fiscal '25 preliminary budget as of budget change memo two. And what we've done is the town, the budget is not balanced, but we're getting it balanced, looking at, in this situation, we're putting the town budgets at 4% and showing various scenarios on what the bottom line is going to look like in the future with the school department at various percentage increases. And basically, any difference is going to go towards the stabilization fund. We'll take that money out of there. So I'll just, I'll start from the beginning. So you can see the tax levy amount is projected. That's a basic projection. That's basically 2.5% plus new growth every year. It's a pretty standard calculation. State aid is broken out into several categories because we wanted to be able to make this interactive. So if you increase Chapter 70, it's based on $30 per pupil. But if you wanted to take it and change it to $60 per pupil, say, it would recalculate everything. So it's made to be interactive. But these are the assumptions. This column here that's in blue, that shows what the escalation is off of the 25, fiscal '25 numbers. We're just projecting a flat 2% on unrestricted general government aid. That's what's in the budget for fiscal '25. And then all the other categories, those percentage increases vary from year to year. And they are also sometimes dependent on the amount of the charter school assessment because charter tuition reimbursement is also included in that number. So chances are, if you have a year where that category goes up a lot in the revenue side, it's going to also go up on the expenditure side. So we're just putting that in at 5%. Local receipts, we're just keeping at 4% going forward. And then we have two other categories. You've got other funds. And I wanted to outline those in a little bit more detail because they are going to be changing going forward. So the fiscal '25 preliminary budget includes $628,000 of Ames funds. So the Ames funds were an income beneficiary of two funds. Ames funds, one benefits the schools and one benefits the highways of Easton. And we include that in our local receipt projection because we never really, it's not a set amount every year, right? It's based on the income that's earned by those trusts that we receive. And over the years, we've built up a little bit of an extra surplus between what we projected and what's come in. And we're able to apply that in fiscal '25. And that's why you see a large, a larger amount in fiscal '25 of 628. But going forward, $450,000 on an annual basis is a more realistic projection. ARPA funds are also included in this category and they're in the fiscal '25 budget, but obviously those are going away. What we've done, as we get down to the reserve section, you'll see reserves increase on the stabilization side. We've basically plugged in that difference into this, is coming from the stabilization fund in the next three years.
And if I could just hop in for one moment on ARPA. I know that's something that we've talked about a bit over the years. Dr. Cabral touched on in her presentation. ARPA had two components to it. It had programmatic spending, more of a grant where you would, through the county, do a kind of pre-audited competitive process for certain eligible expenditures, thinking about consumables for curriculum, things that supported early college. There was also a provision of ARPA, thankfully, that was just general revenue replacement for cities and counties around the entire United States. And so when you see a figure like that shown in the operating budget, that is not representative of the totality of financial benefit ARPA is providing to the town or the schools. It's actually greater than that, which has been a lifeline for the community for three years. Just want to highlight that as we've discussed publicly with Budget Subcommittee for years that we know that the revenue replacement was coming to expire. And so we were ramping that down by a few hundred thousand per year. We had anticipated needing to lean on stabilization to a certain extent in fiscal '25, '26, and perhaps '27 to just soften the expiration of that. But a lot of those assumptions were, were baked on multi-year trends before fiscal '25's cost increases came in and really changed that dynamic. But one of the committee members asked, when does ARPA expire? You can encumber certain costs through the end of this calendar year that may be spent in successive calendar years. Revenue replacement is not one of those. So that is truly the last hurrah from that COVID support.
Good. Thank you. And then these other line items are just line items that are going to be level funded throughout the rest of the forecast. In fiscal '25, though, we are introducing, using opioid settlement funds to preserve existing services that qualify under those settlements. So that's total reserve, total other funds. Then you get into the reserve section of the budget. And this, reserves are your free cash and your stabilization funds. So the fiscal '25 budget is assumed, is using, right now, we're looking at $1,570 in free cash, which is about 50%. Our financial management principles allow for use of up to 50% of the free cash certification towards the operating budget. So that's what we're, we're putting that in here. And then also an amount of stabilization funds.
Just to be clear, when you look at even the two immediate preceding years, you can see, and many of the committee members were on the committee for some of these hard budget years. We, from fiscal '17, leading up to COVID, worked incredibly hard to reduce the one-time money, whether it was free cash or stabilization in the operating budget, impacting both the town and schools. From an average that routinely was in excess of $2 million, down to less than half of that. And that required some pretty austere budgets for many, many years because we wanted to make sure that we were building stabilization funds because these challenges are cyclical. And so when we are showing over $2 million of local reserves, not even counting ARPA, that is really quite substantial and is a reversal from a progress that we've been able to make.
Thank you. So going forward for the projections for free cash, we are making some assumptions here that free cash would be certified at 2.5 million and then 2 million each year thereafter. We do expect that as revenue estimates are increased and budgets are funded at lower percentages than what we'd like to see, our narrow, margins are going to narrow and our free cash certifications will also be reduced. The stabilization fund in, so in this- The stabilization fund, so in this particular scenario, if the school department budget is at 5%, it would re, and the town budgets get down to 4%, then we would not need to lean on as much stabilization funds beyond what is already in budget change memo two. Budget change memo two puts in 670,000 from stabilization. And so this is just an extra, you know, couple hundred dollars in, under this scenario. In the projections, we've, we've basically taken, for the projection purposes, we looked at the school budget at six, the 5.78%, calculated what that deficit would be and how much additional stabilization would be needed. And then we added the 430,000 for the loss of the ARPA revenue replacement funds and that's, that's kind of how you get to this million six number projected for fiscal 26. It's, it's a little easier to see when you, when you look at some of the other budget projections. But we wanted to keep that the same in all of the different scenarios. And that will be the same in fiscal 27. It goes down a little bit in fiscal 28 because our financial management guidelines also require that we not spend more than a third of the stabilization fund. So in fiscal 28.
In a specific year.
In a specific year. So in that particular year, after the spend down, we, we got below that amount. So we're going to, it would need to be a reduced amount in fiscal 28. So those are total revenues. And then total fixed costs actually went up overall in the fiscal 25 budget by 7.64. For purposes of, of this, we wanted to show just what a lower amount would look like in the projection. We didn't want to put extremely high numbers in because there have been some years where those numbers have been lower and we just wanted to put a more moderate number in there. So fixed costs, there's several different lines, but this is just one total line. But within that, you've got health insurance, you've got your debt service, you've got the regional school assessment, the Bristol County Agricultural School assessment and state and county assessments, which also include school choice.
Charter tuition.
And charter school assessments. That's that category. And then basically here, you've got your town budget increases of 4%, over here and then 5% for the school department. That would be the amounts plugged into the fiscal 25 amount. And then going forward, we just put in 4% and 5% escalations going forward. And even, what this basically tells you is that even with all of that reserve use, you know, there's still going to be shortfalls in the next few years. And basically, if you look down here at the year-over-year comparison in the revenue area, you know, your revenue is going up by less than 3%. You know, our problem, it's, it's a revenue problem. It's not a spending problem. And these are 4.5%. I mean, these are modest, you know, increases year-over-year in the projections and, and we're still falling short.
And I think something that's really important to emphasize there, when you look at what a 2.7 or a 2.9% revenue growth factor is of 2,900,000 or 2,800,000, think back to the fixed cost figure I used just for this year alone, just for, you know, health insurances going up. If you have 2.9 million to work with to fund all existing needs, any unanticipated needs, and right out of the gate, 1.1 and 1/4 is eaten up by fixed costs, you're left with a million and change for the school department, all of the town departments, any other assessments that are not encumbered. And so really, what we're seeing here is, to Director Nightingale's point, it's, this isn't the result of, I'll use a more professional phrase, but spending that some sailors are rumored to engage in. The schools and the town operating budgets have grown very modestly. As Dr. Cabral pointed to, you could look at this and you don't have to take my word for it. You can look at publicly available data from the Department of Education, from the Department of Revenue, where the trends you see on the school side are comparable on the town side, where if you look at per pupil or you use other metrics like road miles that need to be maintained, across the board, all of our departments are spending substantially less on per capita bases as well as in real dollars than our peers. And that, this is basically just the long, I guess, foretold culmination of going on 15 years of 1% increases to state aid, which is our second largest revenue category. You have the limitations of Prop 2.5 on operations. Local receipts have been doing really well, but that's roughly 8% of our revenue. So meals taxes, awesome. Love all the new restaurants. Building permits, great. But that category growing at 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% cannot escape the gravity of state aid growing at 1 or 0.9. And so when the town and the schools were able, through creative reorganization, through solar, through energy agreements, through healthcare reform, to continually produce budgets to 2%, 2.5%, 3.5%, we've been able to basically dodge and weave and escape this for a very long time. And that's taken a lot of work by our staff. I know by everyone in this room, at the schools, and some tough choices by folks in this room and also by voters. But we're not trying to come in and be doom and gloom, but more just to talk about kind of the severity of what the next few years we're looking at. I think Dr. Cabral said it well, that thankfully, we've worked really hard, we've built reserves up. We can squeak through a year, maybe two. But when you look at the assumptions in here, you know, we're forecasting deficits even with substantial reserve use that we can't keep up forever. And that's not assuming 10%, you know, strategic budgets. That's assuming maybe 4% and 5%. If we are able to go back pre-COVID and maybe do 3% per year, that brings those numbers down, those forecasted deficits down to an extent. But that's even with using those reserves, that's with using revolving funds. So it's, it's just a confluence of a lot of really challenging factors. So Wendy, if you quickly want to just jump to?
Yep.
So you see what at, for fiscal 25, at a 5.5% or at a 5.78% a commensurate increase in the reserves needed to get to balance for fiscal 25 and the forecasted kind of increase of challenge that we're facing out of the gate in fiscal 26. And again, this does not necessarily account for, and I appreciate that Dr. Cabral put it front and center in her presentation, when we implement certain techniques to get through a bad budget year, like cutting all expenses across the board by 10%, which we have also done. First of all, the expenses of nothing have gone down, they've gone up probably by 10%. Those needs don't just go away, right? They're still waiting for you. And so perhaps you can limp along, get creative, but eventually, those need to be restored. And so you have multi-digit percent increases of known risk coming and that's not even necessarily shown, right? I think it's at 2% and change. That's half of the forecasted increase for the school budget next year. So Wendy asked me a really good question, which is, oh, okay. So it's 80-plus percent. Wendy asked me when we were preparing for tonight, so how are you going to segue out of all the parade of horrible news into a, some kind of conclusion? And I don't have a great answer, except to say that we're going to keep working with Superintendent Cabral and the staff here and we will continue to do everything we possibly can to make it possible for the schools and for our departments to provide the highest level of service that they can. But we really appreciate getting brought in at this stage to have this conversation rather than perhaps at the end of April or at town meeting so that hopefully we could have a good conversation with all of you tonight and answer questions you have, whether it's school-focused or questions about the town's finances, the hows or the whys, how did we get here? We want to be a resource and be helpful and available, so.
All right. So anything else you wanted to add, Wendy, before I open it up for?
That, that's all for the most part. I mean, we're, you know, obviously, we're, we're trying to, to, to just, you know, be, still be responsible in our reserve use. I mean, obviously, we don't want to cut services to the bone. So we're just trying to maintain that, that delicate balance.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll add for the public that the school committee members are on a daily email distribution that gathers news from around the state on what's happening with public education. And most of the headlines recently are around what was passed for budgets in other communities across the state. And it's not unusual to see double-digit increases or increases of, you know, 8%, 9% or more in communities that are very similar to Easton. So there are communities that are passing budgets with increases that are numbers we would never, ever even come close to contemplating here. And, and it just reflects that the cost increases are very real and, and are not items that we have, that we have control over to a large extent. And Dr. Cabral has detailed many of those already, but we are, a lot of our costs, unfortunately, we are simply subject to whatever we're told they are and we are legally obligated to provide services like special education and transportation. There's, our transportation increase was over 10% and that was after a long-fought negotiation to get that down from what the original increase from the one provider who bid on our services was. So there's a problem statewide with lack of competition for some of these very expensive, very key obligatory services. So just so that the public knows, you know, there is no contract that we consider and no expense that we consider without working very, very hard to get the best price that we can for the services that we need. And even with all of that, we're looking at a pretty high percent increase compared to what we've been used to and have been managed to historically. And again, that's still much smaller than what many of our peers are managing with. And those are districts that have per pupil spending that's already, you know, 10%, 20%, 25% higher than what we're dealing with to begin with. So I just can't emphasize enough to the public how much work goes into managing to this very, very constrained budget. So with that, such a joyous, not to be doom and gloom, but that's where we are. Committee members, do you have any questions for Connor and Wendy? I know, you know, we're very familiar with this and have been kind of paying attention to the budget memos and the process at town meeting over the years. Jackie, Kelly, Marvel?
No, I just want to thank Connor and Wendy for putting all of this together and to coming to our meeting. For the nine years I've been here, none of this is news to me, unfortunately, but I just want to thank them for all their, their hard work on this.
Thanks, Jackie.
Kelly, any, any comments or feedback?
Just thank you as well for the details. I'm a data person, so I don't mind this spreadsheet and I appreciate the level of detail that goes into it. Don't love where we are, but I appreciate all of the hard work that the collective group has put into, putting us in the best possible situation. So thank you.
Yeah. And I appreciate the transparency, right? You know, these are hard conversations to have, hard, hard info to present to the public, but I think it's better to just be as transparent as possible and let voters know, you know, this is, this is our reality. So people can't say, what have you been doing and nobody told us? So I think it's really important. I, I hope we have a huge audience out there watching, but if not, I'm glad that it's recorded and that we'll be able to refer people back to the recording of tonight, so. Do you have a plan to socialize this on the road before town meeting?
So we will have our hearings, we have a budget webpage where all of this is shared. So anyone watching this, usually with no more than a day's lag time, when we provide the select board of school committee with all these materials that go on a central website, which is easton MA.us/budget. Once we have a balanced proposal, we usually do some more awareness or, sorry, my two-year-old got up at five today, so I did too. My brain is starting to run out of power. We raise more awareness of a town meeting calendar as we get towards balance. So moving forward, we have, the school committee has its own hearing on the 24th. We have two nights of hearings on the 24th and 25th. And so we'll be working together with schools ahead of that to have hopefully a balanced proposal. And, you know, it's been interesting over the years. There's been some, I've learned, folks don't necessarily want a TED Talk on the budget at every town meeting. There are pros and cons to that. I think I have collectively presented four minutes on the past two operating budgets, just based on voter feedback in the room. And before COVID, we often had budget presentations that were not as long as tonight, but an hour plus. So it really depends on how much folks are engaging with it. We've had some town meetings where nearly 1,000 people come out and somewhere we are pulling your 18-year-old students off a basketball court for quorum. So one of the real challenges we face in this industry, I'll speak, I suppose for myself, is when you're having this discussion, it's hard to balance laying all of this out, without sounding like we're being Chicken Little, because at the end of the day, from a mathematical perspective, under the law, we have to balance the budget. The budget will be balanced for town meeting. And so if you're not going to get into this level of nitty-gritty, it can sometimes seem, if you're a resident, you know, you get your tax bill, it goes in one direction and it's up. You turn on this live stream and see, you know, a guy in a suit saying, oh, we somehow have no money ever, despite your taxes only going up. And that can be incredibly frustrating and I think engender cynicism. And so it's really, really hard to get that kind of engagement. And as you know, Lauren, one of the things we've been trying to do is things like Citizens Academy, to bring people in and really meet everyone and see the things that we're working with, build more understanding in a more personal way. We're also, we're open to feedback and suggestions. I did, I got to meet your amazing student, Marvel. I went to the career club and, you know, just trying to get out and talk about these things a bit more with different age groups and different members of the community. But it's, with everything going on, I think, in folks' day-to-day lives, the looming prospect of a potential financial or service problem 12 months from now is not always in our, I think probably both of our shared experience, the most galvanizing thing. So we will definitely share all this. We put everything out available for the public. We'll have lengthy hearings on the 24th and the 25th. Every single department will present what they're working on, what reductions they had to make to make ends meet. And we'll have a, I expect particularly for this year, we'll, we'll have a presentation prepared for all the voters there as well.
Any other questions about online? And Marvel, did you have any questions or comments if you're still with us?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. It was nice to get Mr. Reed again.
Thanks, Marvel.
All righty, okay. Thank you.
One last thing, it might be good news. The House Ways and Means budget comes out tomorrow, so we'll see.
What, what gives you reason to think optimistically?
If I wasn't optimistic, I wouldn't do this job.
Fair enough.
Right? Right? You have to, you always have to have hope. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Cabral, we really appreciate it.
All right.
Oh, yes.
Alrighty. So, thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Cabral and Mr. Reed and to Wendy and Andrea for the, all the work that went into the presentations and for doing such a good job of explaining something that can be very dense. But we appreciate, we appreciate the clarity and transparency, as always, and the partnership. So, thank you. So, next item on the agenda is actually a vote to approve the capital budget. Dr. Cabral?
So, as you saw in the presentation, this is just, this is not for the five-year plan. This is just for the FY '25 capital request. And we are focusing that funding on school security and technology.
Okay. Can you, and Andrea, maybe if you have it handy, can you just remind us of what those two, what those two numbers were for the capital budget for next year?
Technology is $200,000 and security is $1.5 million.
Okay. Okay. So, before we vote, do any committee members have any questions or comments on that? I know it's certainly something that we've, that we've discussed in past meetings. And a couple of you are on the security subcommittee. So, we know that you're familiar with the long-term project and costs there. Okay, great. Marvel, go ahead. Marvel, did you have a question or a comment? Okay. Alrighty. Okay. So, Jackie, I saw you shake your head no. Any, just want to confirm, any questions or comments? Okay. And is Kelly still on?
I am here. I just had to switch my device and I do not have any questions.
Okay. Alrighty, great. Then, would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the proposed capital budget for fiscal year 2025, which is $1.7 million total, with $200,000 to technology and $1.5 million reserved for security? And just procedurally, for folks to know that this will actually get approved at the town meeting. This is just the school committee approving our proposal.
Wiseman, so moved.
Thank you. And can I get a second?
DeLuca's, okay.
Second move. And roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Percy, oh, yes.
Great. Thank you. Next up is a discussion and possible vote to approve the 2024-2025 calendar. This is our third reading.
I'll have Mrs. Pruitt review that with you.
So, last meeting, you had asked if it was possible for us to have November conferences all on the same day to the high school students, for instances, for childcare purposes or anything else, or even just for parents taking off time from work. If we could look at having the high school conferences and the elementary, middle school conferences line up together. After seeking feedback from the principals, they all are in agreement that we can do that. Originally, you were asking to move the conferences to the 21st and 22nd. However, the high school principal, Mrs. Kavanaugh, and speaking with her, she actually thinks that the 14th might be better because the term will end on the 31st. So, that will, the report cards will come out that following week. And then that, and then the week of the 14th will be a great time to speak with parents about what the report card is reflecting.
Okay. Alrighty. So, that would put, so we would have OA conferences on the 14th and then the elementary K through eight would be on the 14th and 15th. And so, then the week of the 18th through 22nd would be a full week with no time off. Okay. Committee members, any thoughts on that?
That is good. The other thing I was going to ask is, was there any movement on both, all schools having the half-days on the 14th and the 15th? I know you said there was time on learning issues, but just wondering. So, the 15th would be a half-day for everybody but the high school. Is that correct? Okay.
Lauren, do you have any? And any of the committee members who are online?
No.
No, I appreciate the adjustment.
Okay, great. And Marvel, if you're still on, do you have any questions or comments on this calendar?
No, also, I just want to apologize for, for I couldn't unmute myself for some reason. Sorry about that.
Okay, quite all right. Alrighty. Okay. All right. So, do we have ourselves a calendar? This is very exciting. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the calendar for 2024-2025?
So, move, Loomis. Can I just make the suggestion that we put that change as the 21st? Because on this calendar, the 21st is highlighted as the high school, as the high school conference.
Yes. Okay. So, the, so the motion is to approve the calendar with the change that the high school conferences will also be on November 14th. Okay.
So, move, Loomis.
Okay. And can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percy, oh, yes.
All right. Great. Well, that's exciting. Alrighty. So, I see we do have, we do have some members of the public here today. So, if anybody would like to make comments, you are welcome to do so. Please, you would need to state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. And on to topics that are in the purview of the school committee. Nope. All right. Well, thank you for your attendance. It's good to see folks out there. Next up is superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
Andrea and I have been working on all things budget. I do not have any superintendent notes for you.
All right. And assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt?
I will be brief because I know it is late, but I do have two things to report out on. First of all, earlier this week, we were excited to welcome Dr. Gold from NASA, from the NASA Hunch Program to our, to our, oh my gosh, what is in the middle of class?
Clothing and textiles.
Thank you. Clothing and textiles class. Okay, at least we'll know. She was able to present some awards to our students and also to highlight the work that they've done. What was really exciting was that Mrs. Almeida, who's been wonderful at bringing this program to all of our means, was in a locker and some, and the administrators as well, sign the top of a locker that is getting sent into outer space. And so, it was really exciting that the signatures will be there. The kids were really, really excited. And their actual product is, when we first started the program, the product was used in the training facilities of NASA. And what they are, soft goods. So, they're organizers, they're ways they to kind of have our, have, whether it's their
Toilet trees, tools.
Or toiletries or anything like that. They are able to hold them in place so they're not floating around the shuttle.
The International Space Station.
Yes, the International Space Station. And so, well, yes. And so, we started the program where it was in the training facility. And now, they are actually going up into outer space. So, it's very exciting into, into the International Space Station.
Our students are literally subcontractors of NASA. We have a contract with them.
And then, I also just wanted to highlight that thanks to Mr. Davidson and his efforts, we are hosting our second Math Acceleration Academy over the April vacation. That will be Tuesday through Friday. We have about 150 kids registered.
Wow.
Give or take. And some excited teachers and paraprofessionals. And thanks to Amy Bean and Stephanie San Pedro, who will be our coordinators this time. And so, all I have for you this evening.
Okay. All right. School committee notes. Nancy?
Thank you. Robotics, we're out in, the robotics team was out at Springfield on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Well, I don't know if they stayed Saturday. They competed Thursday and Friday. And I think there were 50 teams, and I believe they came in 25th.
Something like, yeah.
Something like that. So, congratulations to them. And I know the parents and caregivers, whatever, had to do a lot because they had to stay in Springfield. It's not like a sports team where they have a bus and they have, they have to rent a truck and they have to do a lot of things. So, congratulations to them. And my, the other thing I'm looking forward to, I've been invited as a judge on, speaking of the home ec class, they're doing chopped on Thursday.
Oh.
I'm a judge. Thursday morning. So, we'll see what happens. They get a basket of goodies and they cook them up and retry them. So, I've done, I did this a long time ago. So, I'm really excited about participating in chopped.
That's interesting.
Yes. Do you want to be a judge?
No.
Oh, okay. I'll ask Mrs. Almeida.
I'll be a judge.
Okay. I'll ask.
Jackie, do you have any, any comments or updates?
Nothing tonight, Jim. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Lauren, do you have anything?
I do. I would like to remind all parents and families to, or parents, to fill out the Story of Self, Story of Us project that the district is working on. It is open to all students and staff. And you take a picture of yourself and you put on the picture, what unique thread do you bring to the fabric of Easton Public School? And it's all going to be put together in a traveling display. And it sounds really exciting. And the deadline is extended to
It's open right now.
Open?
Yep. We do have, we are going to have a table at the NRT Fair as well as the Pride Event, the Easton Pride Event. So, we are bringing it to the people. So, instead of just turning in a submission, we're going to go and help facilitate by bringing the forms to fill out and taking a picture. But if you go on the DEIA Director's webpage, you can get all of the information to submit it on your own or to help your child submit one on their own. Otherwise, we'll see you out and about town. We're going to try to facilitate participation for all students and staff.
And it can only be successful with participation.
Absolutely. That's the whole point of the project. Mm-hmm.
Kelly, do you have anything this week? Still on?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, great. And Marvel, if you're still on, if you'd like to give your update, you can do so now. We moved it down in the agenda.
Sure. All right, I can do that. I was, it was a little OA-centered anyways, but I was just going to talk about how OA had started a new initiative that revolves around, like, saving, like, untouched and unopened school lunch components. So, students are, like, not practicing wasteful, like, exercises and ideals. So, this, like, aids, like, lunch preparation, but it also helps, like, kind of recycling and assisting, assisting the environment and kind of just, like, the school community. And then, OA has also started the final quarter, quarter four, home stretch till the end of the year. Term three grades came out today. The report card came out today. So, all is great on that end. And then, lastly, the OA Orchestra competed in MICA, which stands for the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. It's a competition where, like, people, or various, like, music groups, they perform, compete, and then they have, like, this, like, clinic and get a medal. And this Saturday, our orchestra received its second consecutive year in a row gold medal. So, that was, you know, congratulations to OA Orchestra for that one. But yeah, overall, OA has been seeing consistent victories in, like, sports, academics, arts, and many more.
Awesome. Great.
Do you have a picture of you in that, in that award, Marvel?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great update. And congrats. Alrighty. So, what do we got? So, it seems like 1,000 years ago, but the musical was actually after our last meeting. And that was
Right. Amazing.
Like, oh, so good. So good. So, congrats to all the cast and crew and everybody involved in that. It was really, really special. Also in music, the NAMM Foundation, for the second year in a row, has recognized Easton as nationally one of the best communities for music education. So, congratulations and thank you to all of our music staff who put their heart and soul into making this a great district for music. And also in music, one of the OA Jazz Band members actually was able to perform with the Allstate Jazz Band at Symphony Hall a couple of weeks ago. So, fantastic job there. Thank you to the Easton Middle School eighth-grade Social Studies Program for inviting a panel of school committee, select board, and a member of the Community Preservation Act Committee to a Q&amp;A session that was held with the civics class, the eighth-grade civics class a couple of weeks ago at EMS. It was a really fun experience. And a few important things coming up for Mass Association of School Committees. There are a couple of learning lunches, one on preparing for the Day on the Hill, which is our annual Legislative Advocacy Day, which several of us will be attending in May. There is, our local district, District Three, is having a learning, actually an in-person meeting on Chapter 70. So, if we haven't had enough of looking at budgets, we can go spend a couple hours with our colleagues in person. But I, all joking aside, I probably will attend because it is good to hear what others are doing. So, hopefully others can join for that. And then, we, the school committee, we've been talking about resolutions. There's actually a resolutions clinic coming up in May that I think will answer a lot of the questions that we have about the process. And tomorrow, there is a session that I hope I can drop into virtual in the afternoon hosted by Senator Markey on some clean energy incentives. So, I'm interested to see if there is anything there that we could possibly take advantage of as part of our long-term planning. The budget subcommittee, given all the budget activity that has happened, we're actually not meeting until April 17th. We were supposed to meet this week, so I don't have an update from that. And finally, the town election is on April 20th. The deadline to register to vote in that election is tomorrow, April 10th. So, you can go onto the Easton website, the voter page, check your registration status, and register if, for some reason, you need to. And that's catching you by surprise. And then, there is vote by mail available for local elections. And the vote by mail application can be obtained on the town website. It needs to be submitted either postmarked or handed in at the town offices by this Friday, April 12th. So, if you are planning to be out of town on vacation, please take a few minutes and apply to vote by mail if you haven't already. These local elections are incredibly important and elected officials work very, very hard. And it's, it's helpful to have more than a few hundred people show up at the polls. So, so please take time to participate in local democracy. And I think that is everything.
Sounds good.
Alrighty. So, we're not done yet. I make a motion to, so I make a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Easton Educators Association, EEA, Unit A Coaches Stipends. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Percy, oh, yes.
All right. Great. So, that adjourns our public session. Thank you all for joining us.